Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's the 39th meeting of the 26th Council and we will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. We're going to begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance in English and in Spanish. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the table near the chambers entrance. Members of the public, city staff, and the media have the ability to view this meeting in person and on live streams through four different platforms. GovTV on Comcast Channel 16, the GovTV website, YouTube, and Zoom webinar. The live streams can be accessed from most smartphones, tablets, or computers. Also, this meeting is closed captioned and you may enable your closed captioning services on your television or device at this time. The video recording of this and all past council meetings will remain available for viewing at any time on the city council's website. Council staff is available via telephone if members of the public need assistance finding those videos online. Please call 505-768-3100 for assistance during business hours Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The council will take a break at approximately 7:00 p.m. this evening if needed. With regard to decorum in the chambers, we want tonight's proceeding to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no applause, snapping, or other outbursts during the meeting. I will provide one warning to anyone causing a disruption. Upon the second or continued disruption, that individual will be asked to leave the chambers and if necessary, security will be asked to escort that person out of the chambers. Such removal from the council chambers will be effective for the remainder of the meeting. If continued disruptions occur, I may recess the meeting until order is restored and if necessary, may clear the chambers of persons participating in the disturbance. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are going to begin with proclamations and presentations this evening. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of allowing more than four proclamations per council per calendar year.
Second.
There's a motion in multiple seconds. Madam Clerk?
We can just raise hands tonight.
Oh, thank you for the reminder. All right, all those councilors in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'd like to ask the following people to come up to the podium. Peggy Graham with Mandy's Farm, Melissa McQ with Mandy's Farm, Alicia De Vargas with Mandy's Farm, Jeff Levine with New Mexico Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, Chris Love with Pomegranate Orchards LLC. So as you guys are making your way to the podium, I'm going to just start reading the proclamation and thank you, councilors, for joining me in this. Whereas October 2025 marks the 80th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month and whereas the purpose of Disability Employment Awareness Month is to celebrate the contributions of workers with disabilities and to showcase supportive policies and practices that benefit employees and employers alike and...
Whereas the City of Albuquerque is committed to providing equal employment opportunities for individuals with disabilities through its dedication to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And whereas the City of Albuquerque created an ADA Title II coordinator position in 2019 to address concerns about resident accessibility to city programs, services, and facilities and...
Whereas on August 17, 2020, the City Council adopted our 2084 directing the City of Albuquerque's Office of Equity and Inclusion, Human Resources Department, and the Economic Development Department to collaborate with local disability employment providers to explore opportunities for creating employment opportunities among persons with disabilities. And whereas in September 2025, the City of Albuquerque created the Pathways to Public Service Program in partnership with LSG and Associates, Inc. and New Mexico's Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, which onboards adults with disabilities through a 12-week paid volunteer rotation to introduce them to city departments and results in a two-year internship placement and...
Whereas the Second Annual Disability Employment Awareness Month Conference and Hiring Event is taking place in Albuquerque on October 15, 2025 and will provide the opportunity to further discussions with the city about creating employment opportunities for persons with disabilities within local government and the private sector. And whereas several state agencies and stakeholder organizations will be attending the conference to highlight the value and talent that people with disabilities add to the workplace and affirm their commitment to increase access and opportunities in the workforce for all and...
Whereas New Mexicans with disabilities are a remarkable untapped resource with a range of skills and abilities to help businesses grow and who are skilled, loyal, and committed. And whereas workplaces that appreciate the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of building a welcoming community and strong economy.
Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby proclaim October 2025 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Albuquerque.
So if anyone would like to come to, Madam President, if anyone would like to come to the podium to say a few words and then I'll close it out unless other councilors would like to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Shawanda Bell. I am the Business Outreach Coordinator for the New Mexico Division of Vocational Rehabilitation. I want to say thank you all for acknowledging that people with disabilities have the ability to be employed. And your efforts to include people with disabilities, whether they have visible or invisible disabilities, are included in all workplaces across Albuquerque and make a commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam President, anyone else?
Hello, Madam President. Counselor Penya, my name is Melissa McQ and I'm the Executive Director at Mandy's Farm. And I just want to thank you all for your leadership and acknowledging this month. I'm saying hi. We know somebody here. But people with disabilities are so often left out of workforce development and economic opportunities, so this really highlights the importance that people with disabilities bring to our workforce. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, Chris, did you want to say a couple of words?
Everyone else pretty much already said it, but I would like to thank the city for all the hard work that we've been doing through several years to make this happen. So thank you all for your commitment to this.
Thank you. And if there's no one, anyone else? No? Okay. Well, is there someone else? You're looking at me like, okay.
So, Madam President, I just want to say, I just actually want to commend the city and I want to commend Chris and Mandy's Farm. You know, we started on this journey many, many years ago of really, I have a brother who has developmental disabilities. He's actually been working at Walmart for, I think he's going on 23 years. He said he'll retire at 25, so we'll see. So he has a job coach, but he does his job and he does it, you know, better than some of the other employees. And this is exactly what we worked on to really try to get here at the city to be able to find placement for people with disabilities. And I think, as it says in the proclamation, want to commend the administration, CAO. Just now in September, we hired the official. We've been doing some work in hiring some people part-time, but this is really like our first official employee at the City of Albuquerque. So congratulations to the admin. Thank you for all that work and I appreciate all of you guys and all your work.
Counselors, anybody else have anything to add or say? Thank you all so much for everything you do. Counselor Champagne?
Yes, Madam President. If I could have anyone representing from the Real Grand Down Syndrome Network to come to the podium, I believe there's a couple of guests. And while they're making their down, I will take a page out of Counselor Penya's and read it while they're making their way down. Whereas October serves as national opportunity to bring visibility to Down Syndrome community and the challenges and opportunities that come with it. And whereas across the country, according to the Special Olympics, nearly 400,000 Americans are living with Down Syndrome with approximately 6,000 babies born each year. And whereas in New Mexico, the Department of Health reported that as of 2016, Down Syndrome affected approximately one in every 1,000 births. And whereas there are three different types of Down Syndrome, all three types of Down Syndrome being genetic conditions. And whereas the life expectancy of a person with Down Syndrome is 60 years, which has increased significantly in the past 20 years thanks to advancements in the medicine. And whereas with awareness and advancement in medicine, the quality of life of those with Down Syndrome has improved with increasing education and career opportunities, independent living, and community inclusion. And whereas the Real Grand Down Syndrome Network is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to empower individuals with Down Syndrome and their families through advocacy, education, and support. And whereas the Real Grand Down Syndrome Network is a collaborative network which seeks to create awareness, ensure inclusion, and promote independence in individuals with Down Syndrome, serving more than 450 families across Albuquerque and Rio Rancho and have members as far as Las Vegas, Santa Fe, and I believe, Las Cruces. Yes. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby proclaims October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And Madam President, if it's okay, I would like to invite them to make a couple of words if they'd like.
Can you tell me who you are?
This, hi, my name is Jamie Martin. I'm a board member at the Rio Grande Down Syndrome Network. This is Riley. Usually when she gets in front of a microphone, she's pretty open to talk. So she's 17, she goes to La Cueva High School. This is a very important acknowledgement, so thank you very much. Riley participates in a lot of different activities at school and outside of school with Special Olympics. She participates in track and field, swimming, and her favorite, basketball. She is an avid member of the Rio Grande Down Syndrome Network. She participates in summer camps and other programs throughout the year. She was nominated by the girls' basketball coach at La Cueva to be part of the Unified Pair and participated in the USA Special Olympics Game in 2026. So this awareness is very important to acknowledge that individuals with Down Syndrome are very capable in participating, just like our typical kids. So thank you very much for the acknowledgement and recognition. You want to say anything? Is that good?
Thank you. And Madam President, I do have the proclamation here that I'll make sure you get to it before you leave today, but thank you. Thank you for attending. I have spoke with you before and I know you are a speaker. I know you talk a bunch, but I want to appreciate, I want to say thank you and I appreciate you showing up tonight and taking the time, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Riley, if you ever want to come back to the microphone when there's not a room full of people, you can. I'm sure we can arrange it. Counselors, any other comments? Thank you so much for being here. Next, we're going to go. Next, we're going to move on to our presentations. We're going to start tonight's first presentation from Ms. Christine Burner, our city economist, who's going to provide us an update on the gross receipts tax. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. Nice to see you. I do have a couple of slides. There we go. So this is the GRT report. Each of you should have received a copy of this in your email last month. Please let me know if you did not. So this is July 2025 that we received in September. And so just briefly, the first column on the left, that's the monthly change for July that we received in September. The second column over to the right is the past five-month percent growth average. And then the column to the far right shows the share of GRT that each sector has. For example, retail represents nearly 26% of total GRT and constructions now nearly 12%. And so the food hold harmless distribution was a lot higher this month due to an error at the state tax department and they freely admitted this. And so we did get an inflation for this month then and that's why it's showing growth at 13.7%. If we count for that extra hold harmless, it looks like our growth rate was around, gosh, what did I say it was? I don't have it in my notes. Anyway, the expected growth for this month is 3.8%. Oh, 4.5%. There it is, somewhere else in my notes. So it looks like the growth was about 4.5%, which is still pretty good for the beginning of the fiscal year. And so you can see in that little chart below that accommodation in food, construction, and other services all declined for July, while professional and scientific services and retail all showed gains. And then you can see that the food, right there, growing nearly 300%. So that's the issue that I talked about just a second ago. And then the medical hold harmless and the healthcare sector in general is doing quite well. And then we can switch to the other one. There's not a whole lot, but I, in the interest of providing visuals and going forward, I've got a little chart or a little graphic here for cannabis. You can see what's going on with that going forward. And so just as a reminder, cannabis revenue, or this is the excise tax, state shared excise tax revenue, that declined 16.4% in '25 compared with FY 2024. And then unfortunately, for July of this month, of this year, this fiscal year, it also declined 14.4%. So so far, we're not seeing an increase or an improvement in that situation. So I'll be following up with TRD to see, you know, what their compliance efforts are looking like. And that's really my highlight then for this month. We don't have October's revenue yet, so I can take questions.
Counselors, any questions for Ms. Burner? Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I mean, looking at construction, so it's a negative 1.9% for the month, just a slight increase for the year. I'd call that slight, certainly not as big as the others, 0.9%. And then that share of totals at 11.8%. I don't see a year-over-year. What, do you have the year-over-year for construction?
So the negative 1.9 will be the year-over-year for July, so it'll be comparing this past...
That's year-over-year last July?
Correct.
Okay. How about, is there a 12-month average or even the five-month average year-over-year? A percent change?
Madam President, Mr. Lewis, I, or Chairman Lewis, Counselor Lewis, what I did before I came in was to look at, did I, I was looking at building permits, FY '25 versus FY '24, and we did see a decline in both building permits and building permit revenue. So that was building permit, though that wasn't actual construction. But I can get you the full year. What we have here, this five-month, is just the past five months versus the previous year's same five months. So it's not a year, but it's what I have available, but I can get that full year if you'd like.
Okay. And Madam President, and then the hold harmless on the food, food, it was, I mean, it's, yeah, like outrageously higher, obviously, because there was obviously a big chunk that was put in there. What was the error?
Madam President, the error was really unusual this time. It seems to be an actual just flat-out error. What we can determine is that last month, instead of getting the positive amount of what we were supposed to get, we got the negative amount of what we were supposed to get. And so this month, we actually got about twice as much as we normally would, if that makes sense. So it was just an administrative error. They admitted it, they apologized. I don't have confirmation on exactly how much that was. We can only sort of estimate, but yeah, just an error, fluke.
And Madam President, who caught the error? Did they catch the error internally? Because I know we looked at this report and we saw this outrageous negative amount, I believe, last month, right?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I mean, I fired off an email or I made a phone call as soon as I saw this report. When they discovered the issue, I have no way of knowing.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. Thank you for, I just want to thank council for making the rule change that would allow us to have better information when you come. And thank you for tracking the cannabis. I think that's exactly why I wanted to see it called out, to see the nuances happening in the industry, especially after we made the change with hemp and all the things that we did on council. So I really appreciative of this. And I think this is a bigger question, just how do we as council ascertain the financial stability of the city in any, like, point in time as our economist? Like, how, what would be, there's not like a report I can look at. And I'm asking this very specifically because I've asked our team and the administration, you know, what's the general fund balance, for instance? And I feel like I broke the teams asking that question. Just be real. And so how is, how do we ascertain the financial stability or financial position of the city at any one time? Loaded question, I know.
Well, Madam President, Counselor Rogers, I don't even have the ending revenue for FY '25, yet there are a lot of pending adjustments that need to be made. So while I've got some preliminary information for GRT, full general fund, I just don't have an answer yet. So as far as that goes, we really don't know yet. And it's hard to say where we'll finally end up. But as far as financial stability for the city, I'm afraid, I don't believe I'm the person to answer that question.
Thank you, Madam President. Who is the person to answer that question? If council, like, I've asked a lot of folks, like, is there one report I could look at? Is there, I know it's variable, but who is the right person to ask that question to?
Madam President, Counselor Rogers, it really depends on what kind of, there's a lot of different ways of ascertaining the financial strength of an entity and that's, it's just not something I can, it's something to be explored. What I have access to is GRT growth. And I'm happy to say that the first month for this fiscal year was good, notwithstanding the hold harmless issue. But that's about all I can help you with right now. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next presentation. This is from Acting Director Ellen Braden with the City of Albuquerque Health, Housing, and Homelessness, who will provide an update on the opioid settlement. I could see some, I had heard this might be with the county as well.
That's correct.
So, great. If you can just make sure to be at that other microphone over here, this way. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you. Good evening, actually. Thanks so much, Madam President. I'm here with my colleague from the county, Dr. Wayne Lindstrom, and we're just going to be giving the update. This is the same update, a similar update as to one that we have provided to the LGCC. We wanted to make sure that both bodies, the city council and the county commission, had information, the same information that was provided to the LGCC. So Wayne and I will be tag-teaming this presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I would just like to begin by giving kind of a history 101 with regards to this whole initiative, because it's been a while. You may recall that we had a joint MOU between the city and the county. We were fortunate to take advantage of the fact that the Bloomberg Foundation had awarded $10 million to Vital Strategy, which is an arm of the Bloomberg Foundation, but they're an international consulting house, basically. And they were charged with working with seven states on their opioid settlement fund strategic plan, and we were one of those seven. So the planning that went into this initiative was not cost-absorbed by either the city or the county. When the strategic plan was finally finalized, finally finalized, sorry about the redundancy, we had presentations before the LGCC, city council, and the Board of County Commissioners. The plan was adopted and the LGCC decided to form a work group around what the prevailing guidelines and priorities ought to be relative to that strategic plan. And we worked for about three months before coming up with an LGC guidance document, which then was endorsed by this body as well as the Board of County Commissioners again. So once that was fully endorsed by all three bodies, we put about the effort of an implementation plan as to realizing what it was that we were being directed to do with these funds. So with that, if we can turn to the first page, thank you. There, if you notice the next slide, the total funds received for the county's portion is $25 million plus. I would like to emphasize that when this whole initiative received a lot of media attention, it was announced there was $150 million in new money and everybody's going, wow, what a windfall. And we're still having to deal with that. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because the actualities are much more nuanced than $150 million in terms of a windfall. So this $25 million that the city has received to date basically has been distributed over roughly the last five years. And so with the strategic plan, the work of the LGCC, and the subsequent endorsements, we were not prepared to put this money on the streets, so to speak, neither the city nor the county. And this $25 million basically, you know, for the strategic plan is a one-time-only kind of opportunity to expend over the next three years. The reason I'm saying that is because if we put $25 million in a procurement process now for reoccurring services, by year four, we would largely have to dismantle what it is that we have funded. So the LGCC was very intent in appreciating that, how do we maximize this one-time investment that's going to benefit the system overall in time? The county is only projected to get $2.2 million on average per year through 2038. The numbers are different for the city, but the principle remains the same. So we want to be very clear that we're making sound investments in the short term. You can see on this chart, the funds that we've expended to date, it leaves about a balance of $23.5 million, what was specified in the LGC guidelines, that we issue a capacity and sustainability RFP that was really targeted at small and medium-sized providers to help them build their capacity. That opportunity has been procured and has been procured, but we did the solicitation. We've had 21 submissions overall and we're in the process of reviewing those and we're close to actually scoring them and making some final decisions regarding awards with that particular amount of money. There was a measure to work with APS around a collaborative initiative. The Crossroads Program has been operating within the high schools within APS for a number of years, as well as their clinical services. So APS really made an appeal that with the fact that not just opioid conditions, but all behavioral health disorders are beginning at a younger and younger age, could we make some investments so that we're doing now in the middle schools in the system what we've been doing historically in the high schools? And so we've negotiated an intergovernmental agreement and that totals on the part of both the city and the county, $9.6 million over the course of the next three years. Lastly, we've been directed to put out procurements of $10 million each on the part of the city and the county to build infrastructure. And the city has had that solicitation open. I have further information as we move through this with regards to that. And the county will open their solicitation on October 12. So that leaves us with roughly... So that leaves us with roughly $6.5 million. And back when we were meeting with the LGCC, we had a number of other projects that were under consideration, and we're vetting those now as we speak. With that, I'll turn it over to Ellen.
Thank you. And on the next slide, it's similar. We're showing the allocations from the city funding. And as of last Friday, the city has received roughly $32.5 million from the opioid settlement funds. I apologize, there was this updated slide, but I can tell you the numbers. So we have about, we have $28 million allocated, and that includes, I mean, that's exclusive of the $10 million for the grant, the capital outlay that Wayne just spoke of, as well as the money for the APS IGA and the capacity building RFP. So we have spent roughly $18 million of the funds that had been allocated. And the year-to-date, that is not allocated, leaves about $4.5 million that is unallocated. And I will make sure that you have the updated slide deck with those numbers. Thanks.
I will. We did get it in the iPad, yes. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad, I'm hearing that the public is also asking for these numbers. And so what we're also going to be speaking about tonight is our dashboard that will have these numbers, as well as the outcomes and the outputs from these numbers. And so we're going to be talking about when that will be available and what our process is and having that dashboard available.
While you're still up, would you speak to the APS?
Absolutely. So part of our slide deck also includes APS performance measures. And so these have been included in the IGA. We are meeting monthly with APS to develop a method for reporting. And we're looking at parent involvement and program impact surveys. So what is the actual impact on the parent and the child? Some other high-level impact includes substance use disorder attitudes intervention data. Are they showing that they're actually preventing reduction or preventing repeat clients from entering their programs? We're also looking at their behavioral health therapist performance measures. So again, how do they, how are the behaviors that they are seeing in the classroom as a result of being involved in the Crossroads Program?
And Director, I don't know, do you have a whole bunch more? I know that we were trying to keep it to a three-minute, and then we did the counting for three minutes. And I just want to make sure we get the public some information in the presentation.
We'll be very abbreviated. You'll see on that same slide, the progress reports and much of that information in terms of solicitations that we've put out for this in conformance with the LGCC guidance. And with that, I'd like to introduce John Lonco, who's our data analyst on the county side, who's working on all of the dashboard report.
Good evening. I'm going to hope that you're going to give us a high-level overview. And then maybe direct us where the public and all of us can go to find public-facing information as well, please.
Yes, so, Madam President, City Council, the dashboard that we're currently developing right now, and we'll be working very closely with Acting Director Braden, will be launched before the end of this year. It'll contain all of the financial measures that you're looking for from this presentation. So it'll have budget allocations, expenditures, as well as funds received, and any anticipated funds from the opiate settlement funds. On top of that, we'll also have accountability measures. That's going to be a second phase of the dashboard that will launch as we get these contracts up and running, and we get the performance measures and the data from those contracts. So we'll continuously update that dashboard as we launch that initial phase in December.
And so the public won't, we won't have like a where to go yet until the end of the year, then, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is, and then Director, is there somewhere that people can go to now to see this information that's not just in our iPads, so that the public can find it as well? Director?
I didn't want to cut off Counselor Rogers, Madam President.
No, that's okay.
This information is available at the LGCC website.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Counselors, do you have any questions or comments? Director, did you have something to add? No. Do you have any questions or comments, Counselors? Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. And I talked about this at LGCC, so just for good measure, make sure we do it here as well. In our talks with APS, they are also supposed to pay, help kick in for the dashboard. So we had that conversation, that it's not just the county and the city paying for the dashboard. Since APS got an allotment, APS should also pay for the dashboard. So I just want to make sure, I know you told me that that's in the IGA for them, that they will be doing that, and I just want to make sure that they pay their fair share as well.
Madam, thank you, Madam President. Counselor Rogers.
All right. Thank you so much for being here. Our last presentation tonight, Counselor Lewis?
Madam President, thank you. This is a presentation from Ms. Jennifer Turner, the Director of Municipal Development, give us an update this evening on the ceiling, the crack sealing on our roadways.
Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Madam President, Counselor Lewis, other counselors. Thank you for providing the opportunity tonight for, to provide an update on the Department of Municipal Development's crack sealing program. The Department of Municipal Development, or DMD for short, is responsible for over 4,600 lane miles of road, which is 7,600 acres of pavement. Or to put that in perspective, that's enough pavement to get you from Albuquerque to Disney World, all the way up to Portland, Maine, back to Florida and to Albuquerque again. So that's a lot of pavement. So in municipal development, we see two types of asphalt cracks in the road, small cracks, which are less than two inches on older streets, and those are due to age or asphalt fatigue. And then we also see large cracks, two inches or more, which are commonly referred to as thermal cracks, and are due to expansion and contraction of asphalt. And so crack sealing is a prevented, sorry, is a preservation treatment that delays the need for more expensive and time-consuming treatments, such as full mill and inlay. And so we use two different types of equipment to address cracks. We have three mastic crack sealing kettles used for larger cracks, and three rubber crack sealing kettles used for small cracks. And each kettle costs approximately $100,000. We have 10, in terms of application and personnel, we have 10 blue-collar employees when fully staffed with one supervisor. Currently, only seven blue-collar positions are filled, but when fully staffed, on average, crews can crack seal one mile a day. And then small cracks, we use a wand, you can see in the picture, with rubberized crack sealing material. And then large cracks, we use a trough attachment using mastic crack sealing material with small aggregate. In terms of costs, we spend approximately $650,000 per year on crack sealing material. Our blue-collar crews, we spend approximately $667,000 on salaries and compensation. And then when we pay contractors to supplement operations, this past year, we've spent approximately $1.4 million. And then I have a map here, it's small, but you can see that we see crack sealing requests all around the city. We currently have a backlog of 1,000 cases, and we've had an uptick in recent requests through 3-1-1 and through, to the public more generally, of approximately 60 crack sealing requests a day. To address this backlog and to address concerns from council and the public, we have our crack sealing crew working overtime. We've reassigned other crews to help with crack sealing and patch larger cracks with asphalt. And then we've also recently issued a purchase order for a contractor to support crack sealing additional areas. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to all DMD employees, and particularly our streets crews who work so hard every day to keep our streets safe for all users. And with that, I stand for questions.
Counselor Lewis?
Madam President, thank you. And Director, thank you for the update. And certainly, you know, expertise of our crews who work hard, and that's quite a crew. I know they're incredibly skilled, and it's a big job. And then, and also other contractors, I know that do some of that work as well. It is, I mean, you mentioned 1,000. Again, I want to, I want to kind of just help with some, some big picture on ensuring that we, or what we can do to help the department not only deal with the backlog, but really have a good, strong, you know, funded, you know, sustainable funded future, and ensure that we're keeping up with it. It is, it is, I think even just looking at that map, just the requests alone, the need alone, I think I've been on every street in my entire district since June, and it's definitely at the top of the minds of people who live in our neighborhoods. Because I think sometimes people think that it's just the main arterial roads. These are residential roads in front of people's homes. When I think of two inches, or the two-inch and more are the thermal cracks, the cracks on, in my district, and I know this is all over the, all over the city, are, you know, four inches, six inches. I think I put my whole foot in one the other day that was at least 12 inches. And so these are, I mean, the backlog is immense, and it's a tremendous need. And so, so with the crew that you have now, and with the contractor, if we hire another contractor, how long do you think it will take us to clear the backlog?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, the good news is, is that winter is our favorite crack sealing season. We can use the hot mix in the winter, and so it's a, it's a good time to get it done. I would say, depending on the number of new requests that we get in, we're probably looking at three to six months in terms of getting ahead of the backlog.
Okay. And then, in your plan on hiring, when would you get a new contractor in place?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, we actually are just routing that purchase order to bring the contractor in to add supplemental resources right now. So I think that folks in the city will start seeing more crews out there crack sealing in the next few weeks.
And Madam President, and how do you handle the priority list? How do you prioritize each street?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, that's a great question. We generally take a first-in, first-out approach, so that folks who have been waiting the longest, generally, you know, then when we have crews going out, we'll go into those first, the first requests that come in.
So is there, Madam President, is there, I mean, what about just the condition of the road? I mean, is there, is there part of that priority list, the age and the condition of the road? I imagine a 12-inch crack is a little higher on the priority list than a two-inch crack?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, that is correct. If we have an urgent safety situation, then yes, of course, we will always address that first. And just our potholes, for example, when we get a complaint about potholes, we have crews that are able to go out the same day. But crack sealing, as you know, is a much more labor-intensive effort.
And so you're moving that priority list from time to time when you're seeing different conditions? And then, I guess my other question, Madam President, is, is, so, real quick, at what point is there just replacement, the mill and fill? I mean, at what point, at what point you look at the condition of the road and go, or the size of a crack and go, look, we're not going to fill this anymore? I mean, what are the, what's the data or the conditions that would show this is, this is a mill fill?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, we actually have a contractor that every four to five years drives all the streets in the city and conducts a pavement condition assessment. I think I've shared that with, with you before. And so they'll review each road and say, is this great? Is this fair? Is it good? Is it poor? And so as we review our rehab program and decide what's next, we take into account all the data that we've received. We also look at how, our typical, how pavement degrades from year to year, and that goes into our calculations as well. If we see really bad cracks that we don't think that the aggregate mixed with our mastic can address, then we will do an asphalt patch where we patch the entire area. And that's what we're looking at doing right now when we see those severe cases.
Okay, Madam Chair, last thing. Do you have the, is there any of this that's a budgetary issue? Do you, do we need to allocate more capital funds, more money into our roadways to be able to ensure that we don't get a backlog and to get ahead of it? I think we have a pretty good idea of knowing what the cost would be, and where, you know, which streets, what the cost would be. I mean, do we have the ability, budget-wise, to be able to not only take care of the backlog, but to be able to, to get a good sustainable program that's keeping up with it?
Madam President, Counselor Lewis, I think every department director would say, sure, if there is unlimited money, we would want more funds, but we have to live within our budget. And right now, I'm actually three employees down in my crews, and so my first priority is filling those vacant positions so we can be fully staffed.
Madam President, I, again, I think this is something we got to look at then, this next year, when we do our capital program and we do our budget. Because, I mean, there are certain things that are just, they're, they're essential, they're a necessity. And we have to make sure, I think, that we're budgeting for these essentials, even the ones that we know, especially since we know how much they cost. And I just don't, I don't think that, again, whether it comes to sidewalks and streets and, you know, a number of things that are essential services that, you know, taxpayers, you know, pay for, that should be competing with other, other budget items. And so I guess my, you know, I mean, this is going to take, you know, just some, some of our best financial minds and ensure that within our budget, within our capital program, that, again, and I understand other directors and everybody's living with a budget, I just think we should know what the budget for this is and would be, and it shouldn't be competing with other budgets. And it's just one of those line items that we need to make sure is absolutely funded and taken care of. And by the way, this quality of life, I mean, you know, these are, some of these streets are in some pretty bad, bad conditions right now, and it certainly is something that, you know, at least my neighbors are just, I would say, losing their minds over. You know, Madam President.
Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. Director, thanks for actually having the crews out there working. Your presentation was really good. The only questions, I have a couple of questions related to the cracks. One of the things that I've noticed is, when I, my road has a lot of really bad cracks where I live, my residential street. When that road, when I first became a city councillor, I remember that the CAO at that point called me up and he said, hey, we just filled the cracks in your, in your road. And I was like very thankful. However, that was in 2022, it's now 2025, and those cracks are even bigger than they were before. One of the things that I did notice when he filled the cracks, and I'm just wanting to learn a little bit about this, is when they filled the cracks, the cracks didn't take enough slurry or mastic, because all they did was just, the crack still was visible. All they did was just seep down into the crack, and we still had a crack, but it was full of slurry and mastic, with still the same bump and still the same. Do you have somebody that goes back by and actually inspects those cracks? Because that's one of the biggest complaints that I have. Yeah, they came down, but the crack didn't get filled. All the slurry and the mastic went down, is two inches into the dirt, but did not fix the crack. So how are you, how are you going back and inspecting those? Because if we're out there just hitting the streets and, and putting the slurry in, and we're not putting enough slurry in, then we're not really solving the problem. So how are you inspecting the streets like mine that didn't get the sufficient amount of slurry and mastic?
Madam President, Counselor Sanchez, great job. You know, crack sealing, it's not perfect, and it's a preservation treatment. It only lasts a couple of years, and then, you know, we look at whether a more significant rehab is necessary. Our crews take a lot of pride in their work, and so if you do see issues, then, you know, we encourage you to reach out or have the constituents tell 3-1-1, and we'll definitely come follow up and try to address any concerns that they see. We're constantly looking at the conditions of our roads, and so, and we do have supervisors that look at the quality of the work that's been done. So, so it's a constant endeavor, but again, and I'm sure Counselor Lewis can attest to this, like crack sealing, it's not like potholes. It's complicated and labor-intensive, and we do the best that we can. But anytime you have concerns, please do reach out and have constituents do the same.
Madam President, I just wanted to say, if you can make sure that the crews actually go through and keep an eye on that, because within a day, that crack still, it still comes back, and it is just a crack filled with, with the slurry and the mastic. So please make sure if that does happen, have the crews go back and throw another layer over it, because it will make a difference for the constituents of Albuquerque. Thank you.
Counselor Groun?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Director, you know that you receive my pictures every day. I have my foot in cracks. And so you know that I'm, I'm looking, sharing what I see on the streets as well. I come from a couple of different perspectives, you know, listening to people and seeing what they see, but also from my business. I see cars that come in that are relatively newer cars with low mileage on them, and they already have their mounts or their struts that are blown. And it's because of the roads, the deterioration of the roads. And a few months ago, I met with the department, the Cabinet Secretary for Transportation for our state, and he confirmed what I was seeing as well. How did we get so far behind on crack sealing?
Madam President, Counselor Grouse, I am always grateful to hear concerns about cracks. We definitely want to address them. And so again, everyone, if you see cracks, submit in through 311. In terms of getting behind in a bigger backlog, I think a couple of things. First, you know, we do have some vacancies, and that, that just happens. It happens in every city department. We have turnover, and then when it, when you hire new employees, it takes a little bit of time to train them. So we do have that, but we're working to fill our three. And then frankly, I think people are just reporting more. We're seeing an uptick in six, as I said, around 60 cases a day. This is summer and fall, it's kind of the crack sealing season as folks are out and about with their families and looking at the condition of the streets. And so we just, we tend to get more complaints this time of year, and then we'll, we'll catch up over the winter, as I mentioned. So I think there's a couple of reasons. And then the lastly is in the 1990s, there was a shift in the pavement that the industry started using. And so they didn't get, the industry didn't quite get the mix exactly right. And so we tend to see these thermal cracks a lot more in neighborhoods that date back to the 1990s. And whereas the older pavement jobs just doesn't have the same type of thermal cracks. So it's really, the answer to your question really has a number of components.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, I do appreciate it. Madam President, do you, are you sealing cracks year-round, or are you waiting for the fall/winter months?
Counselor, Madam, sorry, Madam President, Counselor Grouse, we seal year-long. You'll see our crews out in the hottest day of summer. And then, as I mentioned, in the winter, it's not like other types of rehab projects where we have to stop. We're able to use the hot mix and do it year-long, so yes.
And one final question, ma'am. When will you get these three people hired? So you'll be at full staff?
Madam President and Counselor Grouse, great question. We're in the selection process now, so I am hoping by the end of the year, if not sooner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Champagne.
Thank you, Madam President. Director, just a few questions. I'm going to reiterate, and I'm, the job you do in, in filling these cracks is fundamental government work. It's what the taxpayers pay for. So I applaud you and the seven people that cover what you said was 4,600 miles of roads. Okay, that's amazing that you only have 1,000 backlog. So thank you for that work, and, and I think you need 20 or 30 people if we're going to stay off that backlog. You mentioned the catch-up process. Is that a common thing, that you, you fall behind 1,000 during the winter because there's more, or during the summer because there's more calls? And then you normally catch up on the winter, is that a common practice?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, yes, we have done, we have brought on contractors several times during the past, just when we see a big backlog. And we reassign crews as necessary. As I mentioned, our asphalt crew right now, we're having them focus on some of those larger cracks. So yes, we do reallocate resources when we see a big backlog.
Okay, and Madam President, that's usually due to hiring private companies, the, the seven people don't catch up with it? We have to always outsource?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, again, we have internal crews that we can reallocate. We have them do overtime as well. And then we also bring on the additional contract support. So it's a combination of internal work reassignment, overtime, and an outside contractor.
And Madam President, then it seems like you were being, you're working well within the constraints. You had mentioned earlier to a question that if you, if money was unlimited, yes, of course, we wouldn't have a backlog and you'd be able to keep up with it. But you will work within the budget that you are given.
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, yes.
Yes, so your budget needs to be increased. And I'm sure you asked for more money, but have been told, well, this is what you get to work with. So this is what the people of Albuquerque get to deal with, with the budget that you are given, correct?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, again, I work within our budget. There's a lot of departments competing for limited resources. And so, yes, again, right now, if I'm fully staffed, that's three full crews going out to do their work, we would be in a better position.
You think you, Madam President, do you think you can accomplish it with 10 people? If you had fully staffed, that next year wouldn't have a backlog?
Madam President and Counselor Champagne, if we did not have the backlog and we were fully staffed, yes.
And Madam Question, last thing, you had said that, so 4,600 miles, and you got, your team currently can do a mile a day. What's the average cost per mile that you're running for, for filling these? In a day, does it, what does it cost to do a mile?
Madam President, Counselor Champagne, that would require me to do public math. We've learned lessons about that. I will have to follow up in writing with that answer. I am not going to go there.
Okay, I appreciate it. Sorry to put you on the spot with, with mathematics there, so, Madam President, thank you.
Counselor Rogers.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Director Turner. I think I was also kind of shook by the, how much it would cost for our crew, 667,000, right? For our crew of, you're totally funded for the full amount of staff. And then the contractor, what we're paying the contractor above that is 1.4 million per year? Who, do we have one contractor or several that we could work with?
Madam President and Counselor Rogers, right now, we have one contractor, and they specialize in this. So it's always good, just like I, I view my team as the experts. When we go to our contractor, it is one that, that does this all day, every day. And so it's most efficient to just manage one contractor doing the work.
Thank you. Who, who is that contractor that we work with?
Madam President, Counselor Rogers, now that I've just advertised about the quality of their work, but it is Dismuke.
Say, sorry, say that one more time?
Dismuke.
Dismuke.
Yes, D I S M U K E.
Wonderful. I just, I'm always staggered, I come from healthcare, and so the hot, you know, UNO Hospital, we had to have five backups for anything that we ordered as, as a hospital. And so I'm always shocked that, I constantly hear that one person, are there more than one companies that could do this work? Because I'm just thinking, or do we take that 1.4 to Counselor Champagne's, you know, kind of line of questioning, add that to your staff budget? So we don't have to use the contractor as much, right? Overtime, and, and is this contractor charging us for the materials, or do they use our materials?
Madam President, Counselor Rogers, that, that price includes the materials and the labor. So it includes everything that they're doing. And again, having one contractor makes it more efficient to manage, so we're not having crews chase other crews all around the city.
I understand why it's easier, thank you, Madam President, for us, right? But for the people of Albuquerque, it makes more sense to have more contractors or more staff. Because we can't continue to have this back, I mean, I, I think you're, to your, to the counselor's point, your crews are doing amazing with what they have. But we as councillor, are thinking, councillors, thinking ahead to the budget? Like, we could fix this by, and I also think the, are they comparable, the contractor, what they're charging us for materials versus what we would pay for those materials? All kinds of things come up. So I just, as a city, I think it would be smart and good business for us to have multiple contractors so that we can get the work done faster. And we assign them the jobs, so it's not like they're going to go around looking for cracks and be like, that's my crack. Like, right? We assign the crack to them to fix, no pun intended. So I just think it behooves us to just multiple, if we're not going to add staff, then we add another contractor so we can get through this a little faster. And I think in the budget, we, we should be able to help you with that, I think, as a council, to figure this out. Because roads are like, when I add up the calls and emails and texts that we get about constituent stuff, roads is a big one for us, that I know I get a lot. So thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Grouse.
Thank you, I have one final question. We get between 45 and 55 million dollars annually from the quarter cent streets tax. How is that money spent?
Madam President and Counselor Grouse, we submitted through an executive communication a couple of months ago, a full breakdown of how all of our trans-tax funds are spent. We have an obligation to provide that every year. So out of our crack sealing positions, two of them are paid for through trans-tax. And then I would have to defer to the report we just submitted, and we will be, we submit them annually. So I will, can get you the updated report.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Director, for the update. All right, presentations and proclamations are now over. We're moving on to the Journal. I move approval of the September 15th Journal. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Grouse. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to communications and introductions. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 492 on tonight's agenda for action. EC 492 is the mayor's appointment of Ms. Mara Ortiz to the EMS Providers Advisory Committee. There's a second by Madam Vice President. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC 493 on tonight's agenda for action. EC 493 is the 2026 Administration Legislative Requests. There's a motion and a second by Madam Vice President. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing OC 51 on tonight's agenda for action. OC 51 is the Albuquerque City Council Legislative Program for the Second Session of the 57th Session of the New Mexico State Legislature. All those in favor, raise your hand, oh, sorry, there was a second by Counselor Grouse and Counselor Rogers. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. I was getting on autopilot. Counselor Grouse.
Madam President, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R 195 on tonight's agenda for action. R 195 is approving a detailed spending plan for the City of Albuquerque, New Mexico Short-Term Lodgers Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds, taxable series 2025.
There's a motion and a second by Madam Vice President. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselors, any other changes to the letter of introduction? Seeing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction. There's a second by Madam Vice President and Counselor Grouse. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to reports of committees, Counselor Feeblehorn.
Thank you, Madam President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, September 24th, and reports out the following items in the matter of R 182 that it do pass, and in the matter of M 5 that it do pass and be acted upon at the meeting at which it is reported. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
There's a motion and several seconds. We'll pick Counselor Champagne. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselors, are there any defers or deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Counselor Lewis.
Madam President, I'd like to pull R 25 173 off the consent agenda.
We're going to pull R 173, please, Madam Clerk. Counselor Champagne.
Madam President, I'd like to pull R 1, R 25 183 off the consent agenda.
R 183, please. Counselor Penya, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I pull item B, EC 440, off the consent agenda. EC 440 is the Albuquerque Ride Up Town Connect Project Development.
Pulling EC 440, and Counselor Grouse.
Madam President, I pull item F, EC 486, off the consent agenda. EC 486 is the Fiscal Year Objectives Report.
All right, EC 486, Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I pull item K, R dash 171, off consent agenda. R dash 171 is amending the Adapted Capital Improvement Program for the City of Albuquerque Aviation Department by transferring funds to existing projects, appropriating funds for passenger facility charges, PFCs, appropriating investment funds, approving new projects, closing projects, and accepting federal and state grant funding.
There's no second needed, I was, sorry, I was delayed in reading. So we're going to pull R 171, believe it or not, there still is stuff left on the consent agenda. Counselors, any other items to remove from the consent agenda? All right, I move approval of the consent agenda. There's a second by Counselor Grouse. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We're going to go back to Counselor Lewis, R 173.
Thank you, Madam President. R 1, R 25 173 is naming the new Multi-Generational Center in District 5, the Conway Wood Northwest Multi-Generational Center. The, the Multi-Gen Center is, is being constructed right now with the, the help of this council and administration. We've been able to fund this amazing facility, the first phase. Eventually on this property, it's about 11 acres of property in, in District 5. And eventually on this property, we'll have a, a city pool, as well as a city library. So it's just a, it's a remarkable piece of property and really a wonderful facility that we're adding to it. And so this, this bill tonight is to name that Multi-Gen Center after a really wonderful, wonderful man who was a real stalwart in our community and somebody who really worked hard for our community and advocated for seniors and so many things. And we have his, his family that's here tonight, and I'm going to, like, I'd like to read a, so this, these were asked statements are actually in the bill, but they're also on a proclamation as well. We're, we're actually, we're, we're dealing with the bill tonight, but some of the same language. So I'm going to read the proclamation. And I'd like to ask Mr. Wood's family if you all would come on up to the podium, and, and some of you that I know would, would like to say a few words.
And Counselor Lewis, before you do that, I just want to make sure we have the motion and second on the record, so I don't forget.
You got it. Madam President, I move a do-pass, R 173.
And there's a second from Counselor Sanchez. Back to you, Counselor Lewis.
Great, thank you. In fact, anybody from the family, if you all would like to come up, we'd love to have you. The, the, the whole family would be great, so you all come on up. You all have to see this, this beautiful family.
Counselor, maybe as they're coming down, you can start reading if you don't mind?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Great. So whereas the new Multi-Generational Center in District 5 is being named the Conway Wood Northwest Multi-Generational Center in honor of Conway Wood's lifelong commitment to serving seniors and advocating for community resources. And whereas Conway Wood dedicated his time to improving the lives and well-being of the senior citizens of New Mexico, and Mr. Wood and his wife, Eunice Wood, were faithful attendees at the Paradise Hills Senior Center in Albuquerque, participating from the time the donors opened until they closed. And whereas Mr. Wood served as chairman of the Advisory Committee at the Paradise Hills Senior Center, where he played a key leadership role. And Mr. Wood was deeply familiar with the financial structure of senior centers, as well as their goals and critical programming needs. Mr. Wood helped prepare the Paradise Hills Senior Center each morning by setting tables, filling pitchers with ice water, greeting new visitors, answering phones, and encouraging fellow members to volunteer through the RSVP program, thereby fostering a spirit of community service, contributing to the department's volunteer hours and ensuring a warm and welcoming environment for all. And whereas Mr. Wood made it his mission to advocate for the needs of seniors by working with local city and state officials to secure funding for senior centers, and was a tireless champion for underserved communities, helping to establish senior services where none previously existed. And whereas Mr. Wood consistently rallied government officials, community leaders, and anyone who would support his vision for a dedicated senior center on Albuquerque's west side. And Mr. Wood often shared stories of working alongside former President Bill Clinton, then-governor of Arkansas, advocating for legislation that benefited senior citizens. And whereas Conway Wood will be greatly missed and his legacy long remembered. Mr. Wood, and, and again, welcome to the family, and love for you to share a few words if you'd like.
Thank you, Madam President and the council. So we're, on behalf of our family, we'd really like to express our gratitude for this. Means, means a lot. So in, in addition to his support for seniors, he was, he was a, a big Bolo Thai fan. fan. Had, had quite the collection. A lot of us are, are wearing part of his collection tonight. Um, so in the sixties and seventies, we, we lived in Cortez, Colorado, and that was where he started fighting for a senior center there, and they, they accomplished that. And then, I think in the early eighties, he moved to Mina, Arkansas, um, where he did the same there, was, was successful in getting the funding and getting one built over there. And that's where the story about, um, then Governor Clinton, they were at a meeting and they were going down some steps and my mom tripped and Governor Clinton caught her. And so he had a lot of fun saying that, yeah, my wife, she fell for Governor Clinton. So, um, I don't know, it, I don't have much more. I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam President and Counsel, I just have a funny story. It was on the front page of the Albuquerque Journal. Um, they, they decided to take the salt and pepper away from the seniors. Well, this here says they were seasoned ci- citizens, you know? And so, uh, Conway, or Mr. Wood, was, you know, sitting outside, kinda sad about it. And it just happened a reporter came up to him and said, well, what's wrong with you? And he said, well, they took our, you know, salt and pepper and the food's kinda bland and da-da-da-da-da. Well, anyway, somehow Mayor Berry got a hold of the story. I guess he heard it in the paper first. And so he decided, it said the, uh, senior center ban on salt and pepper doesn't pass the common sense test. So Mr. Berry reinstated them to have their salt and pepper and, uh, the front page said salt on Mr. Wood. He was pretty spicy and seasoned guy.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Madam President, I, I had, uh, just the privilege of, uh, knowing Mr. Wood and sitting down with him, uh, a cup of coffee and talking about senior centers. And he certainly was a great advocate, you know, for the city and for, uh, for the wonderful people on the west side in so many ways. Um, and I, I remember the time when we also tried to take away coffee from seniors.
Coffee, I was gonna say that, but I didn't want to be in trouble.
And I, all of us almost lost all of our jobs over there. And so, uh, uh, so thank you all so much and a beautiful family and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you all.
Counselors, any questions or comments either for the family or on the bill?
Do you want to say anything?
Counselor Lewis to close.
He also was a very busy guy. See what he did?
Thank you. Counselor Lewis to close.
He'd be a hundred and two today.
Wonderful, all right. Thank you, Madam, Madam President. I, uh, urge your support.
All right, counselors, I, we're on, I don't have it, it's, I lost my page. R one seventy-three, thank you. We're on R one seventy-three. Counselors, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes and it would've been real awkward if it didn't. Thank you so much. All right, moving on, Counselor Champagne, R one eighty-three?
Thank you, Madam President. R one eighty-three, yes, establishing emergency parks, grass, and turf replacement fund, uh, source to address the dying turf grass and, in the parks citywide. I ask for a, a do-pass with this.
There's a motion for a do-pass. Is there a second? There's a second from Counselor Grouse. Counselor Champagne?
Yes, Madam President. This came through FGO. Um, it passed FGO, uh, with a unanimous vote, uh, but during the comments and the, and the back and forth over it, uh, I had advised that I would bring this off of the consent so that the entire council can weigh in because it's a, um, it's a sensitive, well, it's not a sensitive subject, but it's just a hot topic. We had just finished up, here we are in, in the month of, of October. Our budget just started in July and for some reason, uh, it seems like Parks doesn't have enough money, even though we allocated enough. So I wanted to, and I said that I would address it and bring it up to the rest of the council. So I hope, I wanted to open up for conversation, please.
Counselors, any questions or comments on one, R one eighty-three? Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm just understanding this to mean that we're appropriating money from our FY twenty-five if there's a fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what it is.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I guess my confusion is, I just asked, like, what is our fund balance? What is the financial situation of the city? We don't know. So I think that it's hard for us to say we're gonna earmark money that we don't know that we're gonna have for this, which I agree, we need green grass and things in our parks. But if there's a need in the city like roads that we just finished talking about, right, what, and there's only two million, if we pass this, then that means we would be prioritizing that over roads because we don't know how much money we have right now. So I'm just, help, help me through that on how we as a body would, would appropriate money we don't know that we have right now?
Who would you like to provide information? Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I would say, since the sponsor's pointing to Mr. Motzko on our team, we'll go with Mr. Motzko.
Mr. Motzko?
Uh, Counsel President Basson, uh, Counsel Rogers, that, that's exactly right. This is a, a bill to address the, the urgent need in parks that have been overrun by weeds, uh, dying grass. And we're hoping, working with the administration, uh, with their hard work staff that, that they have at year's end, that FY twenty-five will come up with some, um, fund ballots for, for addressing the issues.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam President. I think, 'cause I asked the administration to find two hundred thousand for case management for seniors at the gateway, right, that aren't getting case management. And I was told, that's how I broke the team, the budget team. I was told I need to meet with Sanjay Bachta and meet with Lawrence and all these people to find the question to that, like, answer to that question. But now we wanna, um, so I'm just struggling with this myself and thank you for answering those questions.
Any Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just a couple of questions on this one. Um, it was my understanding at the end of the budget process this year that, um, our Budget Chair had, uh, indicated that we would be prioritizing, um, additional COLA for city staff, um, if there was any available funds at the end of the year. And I would just like to ask if that, you know, if, if, if we're really gonna say that the priority is turf over paying our, um, staff more. Um, and then I did have a question for potentially, I, I don't know if it's for CEO or for, um, the Director of Parks, but one of the questions that came to my mind and people have asked me about on this bill is, we're saying that the city's gonna undertake an emergency park turf replacement project, but I also understand that this is not the time of year that we can actually buy turf. And so I would just love to hear what we would actually do with the two million if that is prioritized for, um, this, um, proposal before us tonight.
Madam CEO, Mr. Wayland?
Uh, Madam President and, uh, Counselor Feeblecorn. Well, even with this, the funding wouldn't even be available till mid-January at, at best because we are barely going through our year-end close for twenty-five. And, uh, the general fund is the last fund to close out of all of our funds. So it's being audited right now and that's what we're working through. So, uh, to Counselor Rogers' point, yes, we don't know what the exact fund balance is because it's changing on a daily basis as we're closing out POs, we're paying off contracts, we're closing open POs, and then our auditors are making adjustments as we go. So the, the, the funds wouldn't even be ready till the mid-January because our ACFO, which is the annual financial, uh, comprehensive report, um, is due to the state auditor by December fifteenth, and that's usually when we send it. And then they usually have it for about two weeks, maybe three, and then you have the holiday in there. So it takes about a month because of the timing.
Thank you, Madam President. And so the question was, can we buy turf now? But let me rephrase the question and say, can we buy turf in January? Um, is that available in January?
Um, Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, uh, it's not ideal, so I wouldn't recommend we do it that. No.
Thank you, Madam President. And just one more question. Um, I spoke to, um, the Parks and Rec staff, um, about a couple of the parks in my area that are looking pretty, um, brown, um, although it is the fall, so I think they're supposed to kinda look brown right now. Um, but, uh, I was, it was explained to me that there would be overseeding in the fall in a lot of areas where we had turf that had been damaged or, um, you know, was a bit under the weather. Um, and I'm just wondering if that is still the plan to provide kind of, um, emergency repair to, um, turfs and parks?
Mr. Wayland?
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, um, you know, we're, we're more than willing and happy to meet with counselors to discuss our plan going forward. We've made that offer already to several counselors if they wanna meet and talk about our plan on how we're gonna revitalize. But I have Director Simon here who could really explain the seeding portion of that. But, um, we are willing to meet.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to hear from the Director. He, he explained it to me, but I'd, I'd like to make sure I understood it correctly. Thank you.
Good evening, Director.
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Counselor Feeblecorn, uh, you are correct. When we have the opportunity and resources, we do some overseeding in the fall. Uh, getting those seeds to germinate requires the proper temperatures. Uh, right now, temperatures are staying a little warmer, maybe a little warmer than we'd like, uh, but we are seeing some grass seed germinate, actually, now that we've put down over the past few weeks. So we, we would do that, uh, as our ability permits.
Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions? Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Director, is the fall the only time you seed?
Uh, Madam President and Counselor Champagne, no, we, we overseed also in the spring.
In the springtime. So if something was allocated in January, say the two million dollars, you could access that and use it in the springtime, correct?
Madam President, Counselor, yes.
Okay. Um, and please do understand, this doesn't take away from the amazing work that Parks and Rec does. I understand you guys work just about as hard as the road people do, uh, and that, within the constraints that they work in.
They work.
Uh, because I'm sure that you, just the same as the past Director, asked for a certain amount of money to conduct what government is supposed to do and take care of these fundamental, uh, operations for our city and our taxpayers. Uh, and we're told, here's the, the boundaries you can work in, uh, and what your budget's gonna be. Um, and I think that comes into, to, to say with the budget in, uh, of a COLA. It isn't necessarily we're choosing one or the other because I believe this council just passed the patch program last deal that we have no funding for, but we passed a program for it. So I'm slightly confused about that, but, um, if this two million dollars is awarded and it does come in January because we find it, just like we find other money, uh, is it gonna be very beneficial for your program in, in fixing the issue citywide?
Well, Madam President, um, Counselor Champagne, you know, as my fellow director said in a good presentation on the needs of, of the streets program in the city, I think we, we all have needs that we'd like to address and, uh, but we work with what we're given. We try to do the best job with what we're given. So, uh, of course, you know, we would do our best to invest those funds, uh, to get the results that we all want.
Perfect. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, you know how much I love our parks too. I see, I love seeing families out there using the, the new playgrounds and the, and the fun playgrounds and all of, all of the things that we do have for, for our citizens. Um, but I also hear, um, as I've been walking, I hear a lot about the needs, that they're not what they were used to. And so, um, and I know there's different reasons for that. Just recently, I've been hearing that they can't even, some of their dogs can't, they can't walk their dogs on the parks because of the goat heads that are in the parks. Um, and so they have to take their dogs home and pluck those goat head stickers out of their paws, and, and that's sad too. So I, I know that, um, I, you know, we, we have a lot of parks and I want to be able to make sure that we're taking care of them well. Um, could you use this money?
Madam President, Counselor Grouse, we will use to the best of our ability all funds the council puts at our disposal, as would any department, all of which have needs that are difficult to balance, you know, right now.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. And while you're at it, we could give some money to the Middle Rio Granite Conservancy District since my dogs suffer every day on their ditches from puncture vine.
Yes, thank you. Um, Madam President, I think, um, Counselor Feeblecorn did mention that, yes, at, um, year-end, at the year-end time, um, when we're doing a cleanup, we want to be able to, thi- this is specifically for, um, fiscal year twenty-five and, and then talking, going into fiscal year twenty-six, seeing what other option, opportunities, um, that there might be. But I think that it's important that we remember all of these things. I also know that there is a, a real, real need, um, uh, in, in the co-, in the planning department, in the code, code enforcement department. There, there is also a strong need there to, so there are many needs within our city and it is hard to balance and figure out how best to spend money, um, for, for all of the citizens. But taking this in mind, um, uh, is it possible that we can defer this just, uh, a month? Or, um, i- is there a real need to pass it right now?
Counselor Grouse, I don't know who you wanna direct that question to. Technically speaking, if the council votes with five and you make a motion for deferral, then it can happen.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis?
Well, Madam President, thank you. Um, so, I mean, these are emergency funds and this is where this started, you know, I think it was a little over a month ago.
Counselor Lewis, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just, I had other counselors before you as far as questions, but I, I know that Counselor Grouse was asking you, your opinion about a deferral.
I'd rather discuss it first.
Okay. Um, I'll come back to you, I promise. Uh, but Counsel, Madam Vice President, you were next.
Thank you, Madam President. So I just had a couple of questions. I would support a deferral just because I, I do, the patch program had no money allocated to it. This money has, um, this, this has money allocated to it. And I'm wondering, um, you know, as being committed to the whole chair in the past, we really don't allocate money that we don't have, right? So what if there's some kind of catastrophe and we don't have any of these, this money? And then we're kind of in this position, and then I do agree about that other half a percent that we had been talking about before. So I would be, um, amenable to a, a deferral because I think this is great. If the money's there, um, when we can spend it, then it doesn't change what we're trying to do here today, in, in my opinion. But I just wanna ask, maybe City Legal or, or you, Mr. Motzko, somebody, um, or Julia, um, can we actually allocate money when we don't have money at the present time?
Uh, Ms. Kuledon, Ms. Keith? Um, I heard City Legal or Ms. Kuledon from Council Legal.
Counsel President, uh, Counsel Penya, this is, as I read it, a contingent allocation. So it's contingent upon the evaluation of the fund balance for FY twenty-five, which I understand would be completed in December. But so I do believe council has the authority to make this kind of contingent appropriation.
Anything else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, if, um, Counsel Grouse decides to make a, a motion for a deferral, I would support that. I don't think it would change anything. It would still be alive and I think it's a good idea, but just wanna make sure that the money's there.
Counselor Lewis, you're next.
All right, Madam President. Um, a couple of things on the budget. So, um, uh, city's own FY twenty-six budget shows revenues climbing nearly five percent, uh, from eight hundred and thirty-three million to eight hundred and seventy-three million. Uh, there was a twenty-one million dollar available balance that existed in FY twenty-four. Um, I don't know why any of that wouldn't have been used for parks or streets or other things, but, uh, again, last year, twenty-one million dollars. Um, our, our finance staff, uh, took a look, uh, even just today, um, I mean, if there's a question of whether we can afford a two million dollar park restoration plan, um, these are the following departments that are currently projected to underspend in two thousand twenty-five. Uh, community safety by one point three eight million, uh, youth and family by three point two million, uh, HHH by one point five million, uh, police by two point eight five million, and parks by two point four five million. Again, those are projections on underspending of the budget, um, by the end of the year. So a little bit about, again, uh, is this, is this typical? Do we do this? We certainly have, um, you know, uh, you know, reallocated. And also, uh, you know, we, we left this open to be able to, um, you know, help the we left this open to be able to, you know, help the administration be able to, to find that in ways, if they're not spending in some areas, you know, and they want to use it for this. I mean, the bill leaves it open for the, for the Parks Department to be able to do that. So I think there's some, again, some financial data here and reasoning that makes a lot of sense. We're faced with now, and reason, again, why is this called an emergency, you know, Parks turf funding program? It is about reseeding. It's not about replacing turf. I think if we don't reseed it right now, then, then we will be replacing turf in the spring. And that's exactly what I was told by the director when I sat at one of our parks with him, a constituent, at Hunter's Run Park, about a month and a half ago now. That park, I have a binder, I have a binder of 50 or 60 pictures of parks all over the West Side that are close to dying. I mean, close to just being gone, meaning that if we don't do anything with them now, then we will have to completely replace them in the spring. And, you know, when, when we, we sat and looked at these parks, the communication during that time, specifically, among other things, among challenges with labor and things like that, was that these are budgetary issues. These are budgetary issues. If we want, I could show you emails from other constituents that were written by Director Simons that said, these are budgetary issues. And so, you know, certainly looked, wanted to look back, because I didn't want us to be able to miss something. I want to make sure that we're funding these parks. And by the way, the condition of these parks is not something that I've seen for, I mean, in the last 15 years, I've never seen these parks look like this. These are neighborhood parks that I've never seen look like this, and our constituents haven't either. I mean, they're just blown away by it. So, so certainly, again, the word was from the department, these are, we're having some budgetary issues. So we go back and look at this budget to make sure the council didn't, you know, miss something. And when in fact, you know, we had discussions during our budget time of, specifically with the director, of, you know, are we missing anything? Do you need more? Is this enough money to have a good quality of service, you know, to maintain our parks at a high level? And, and again, as with every department, there were program savings to the tune of almost a million dollars in program savings. We had a lot of discussions over whether those were cuts or not, but the bottom line is that there was almost a million dollars in, in less funding to parks. Now, you could say that, I mean, it was, it grew year over year, but there was about $800,000 in program savings. And again, wanted to confirm, you know, do we need that money? Do we need that program savings? Should it go to parks? And the word was, yes, or that we're fine, you know, we're fine. And so again, it was just a little shocking to find out that there were budgetary issues, you know? And so, again, so let's, let's solve it, you know? How do we solve it? You know, we can't wait until December. We can't wait until next budget year, certainly. So what can we do now? And I think this is a sensible way to do that. I asked the Parks Department, I asked the administration, look, if you've got a plan, and you can demonstrate a plan that we are going to, you know, reseed, we're going to be able to save these, these parks, we're going to get them where they need to be, if you could show me that, and show me how you're going to, I mean, that's paid for within this budget, then I'm fine. I will draw this bill even. I'll even withdraw. It's fine. You know, if you could show me the plan. This has been a month and a half. There's not a plan. I don't want to defer two weeks or a month without having any kind of a solution or an answer, you know, to that. I'd rather just allocate the money and say, you're responsible now to come up with a plan. There's no excuse whatsoever. It's not a budgetary issue, and we've got to get these parks where they need to be.
You're good. Counselor Feeblecorn?
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I wanted to ask, the underspend projections that were presented, I'm just wondering where those came from, because I have not heard those.
Well, that's our financial staff. Madam President, that came from our financial staff.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Motzko.
Madam President, Basan, Counselor Feeblecorn. As Counselor Lewis said, these were projections. We ran the general ledger report this afternoon that sweeps the entire budget. And at the current locate, at current point of time today, this, the city overall is underspent by about $11 million. Several departments are overspent, some are underspent. So that's, that's that number today. Obviously, as, you know, Associate CAO Wayland said, we won't get this information until the audit in December or January, but we do run our running total.
Thank you, Madam President. So just want to make sure I understand. So we just took the total budget, and we divided out the number of months that we've covered, and we said, if they haven't spent an equal amount in every month, then they're underspending.
Madam President, Counselor Feeblecorn, it's my understanding that we looked at each department's individual budget, including open POs, various contracts that need to be paid, and what they've paid as of today, even though the fiscal year ended on, on June 30. And, you know, we give our departments, as, you know, last year CFO Soroso said the same thing, we give our departments time to get those stragglers coming in to pay previous year's fiscal year budgets, and POs, and contracts, and then that will get audited at the end of the year. So what we did today was, we just ran, this was their budget, this is how much they've spent to date, how many, how many dollars are out the door versus how many dollars were allocated at the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it.
And I know there's another couple of councilors that want to circle back, but if I may squeeze in just real quick. So I don't claim to know everything, and this is definitely starting to confuse my brain a little bit. So I imagine there's probably many people out in the universe that might be confused as well. But I would like to clarify that we're talking about, the FY '25 year, just to be clear, is done, as far as the actual fiscal year for the city of Albuquerque, for those watching. It ended on June 30. We are currently in the FY '26 year. So we're talking about cleaning up any remaining funds that come in based off of the GRT and, and any information that was through the close of that year. That FY '25 before June 30, or by June 30, correct?
Madam President, Basan, that, that is correct.
Okay. But we don't really know exactly what those numbers will be up until June 30 of FY, the FY '25 fiscal year, until around mid-December. Is that correct?
Madam President, that's also correct.
Okay. So I think this is a very well-intended bill. I have plenty of, I mean, I think that we've nailed between streets and parks today, 95% of my emails. But at the same time, I also have concerns that even though the intentions are good, I think that I, we, I, I remember getting a budget for FY '26 that started July 1 that was balanced, meaning we started with not really any extra money. And so how do we, and even if we're talking about overages and under, under, under lower amounts, right now, how do we say that at the beginning of a fiscal year? We have all year long to start balancing things out, where if a department is over or under in this current fiscal year, they should still be able to balance that out until June 30 of next year, or if there's a cleanup in between or whatnot. But I definitely, I, I have heartburn over saying, I'm going to count on us having more when it's in the near future that we will actually have solid numbers. Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Madam President. So, I mean, you kind of wrapped it up in a nutshell. I just want to say that I really appreciate Counselor Lewis. I think we all are supportive of this bill. We really need it. I, I agree that, you know, we have some issues with some of our parks that we need to get addressed, although I must say that, you know, there's been some work done to a couple of our parks that I'm really pleased with. But, so, I think it's a win. It's just that I'm just more comfortable supporting it when we know exactly how much money we have in the bank. So.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have to point out, I would like the same level of service that Counselor Lewis got when it came to looking at our fund balances. This is not acceptable. I asked the same question for my $200,000 appropriation for something I do think is an emergency, which is seniors at the West Side Shelter getting case management. And I couldn't get a breakdown like that from our own team. So I'm a little frustrated, and I would like to, this breakdown that you guys whipped up for Counselor Lewis today, to also be sent to me, so that I can, I held off on my appropriation, because I couldn't get this information, so that we wouldn't have to waste time as a council on these types of things, because we don't have access to the same information, depending on who asks the question. I am livid. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Lewis, I'm coming back to you, and if you can also, with your comments, in addition to that, do a close.
Yeah, Madam President, I mean, I would, I'll tell you, I'll move, I will move a, a two-week deferral. And in that time, I will be even willing to withdraw this bill. If, if the Parks Department can show me that they have a plan with the money that they have, that to, to keep our parks, and again, if we don't reseed, if we don't put a massive amount of dollars into our turf this year, right now, in the next few months, then my understanding is that we have to re-sod it in the spring. And those parks go offline for a year before they're used again. And this is unprecedented. I've never seen our parks in this condition before, you know? And so, that's fine. I mean, if you all, the administration can show us that you have enough money right now to put together a great plan to do, said you'd do this spring when we did our budget, and, and come to us next meeting with that plan, at the next meeting, I'd be glad to withdraw the bill. If you don't want the money, I'll withdraw the bill. You've got to show that we're not going to lose our parks, you know? Otherwise, I mean, this is, this is the whole reason why this is an emergency bill. I mean, there's a reason for it, and we clearly are going to have enough money. I mean, again, why didn't we, what do we do with the $21 million when we cleaned up, could have swept the 20, into year 25 budget, you know? I mean, pretty sure we're going to have that same amount or more, you know, no matter what we do. But we do have an administration that, that wants to spend every last penny on, on, on their priorities here. But, so, so I'll make a, I'll make a two-week deferral, or motion.
There's a motion and a second from Counselor Graut for a two-week deferral. All those, excuse me, in favor, say yes, and raise your hand. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to EC 440, Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Madam President. EC 440 is Albuquerque Ride Uptown Connect Project Development Agreement. I would move approval, but I just wanted to ask the administration, do we have somebody here who can speak on that? I had asked the question about, like Sawmill and some of the development that we're doing for parking and the enforcement. And I know this project has, you know, a smaller space for, for parking. And I know we were told that you wouldn't, or the developer wouldn't be enforcing, but I know they're enforcing, you know, like in Sawmill, and, and they're for, you know, affordable housing, right? Because there's a lot of great things happening there at Sawmill, but then some of the people that are in affordable housing projects are feeling the effects of some of those citations for parking. So I know I had asked that question before, and I don't recall getting a response on that. Maybe I got an email that I overlooked. We get so many emails. So just remind me.
Madam President, Counselor Penya, we have Bobby Sisneros from Transit, who can speak to this, the Transit Connect Project, Uptown Connect Project, and what's included in it. I think, did you hear the question?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Sisneros, when you're, hi Bobby.
Hi.
So when you're actually talking about it, though, I really want you to put it in the context of thinking of an ordinance that we can pass for any kind of affordable housing that we're doing with this mixed use, where we have, you know, market housing, affordable housing, but where we're not penalizing the people who are living in the affordable housing with some of these really high fees associated with parking.
Madam President, Counselor Penya, thank you for the question. Rebecca Velardi with the contractor did send out an email addressing this very question. I'd be more than happy to forward it to you after I sit down, so make sure you have that. We're, through their experiences with similar projects, it's, it's always a fine balance of how, figuring out who lives there, who's visiting, and then for how long. So I know that the developer is constantly working towards that goal. They want to make sure that it's pleasant for everyone that lives within their, their development. When it comes to passing some kind of ordinance with affordable housing, I'd, I'd like to work with the affordable housing folks before I answer that question. I'm not too sure how we would handle that.
Oh, okay, Madam President. So, great. So I think, as you guys are developing these agreements for this project, I think we need to incorporate some of that in there, whether it's a sticker that people who live there have, that live in the affordable housing, something to alert them that this is a resident of the community. So I'd love for you guys to be able to incorporate that in. And then, I guess, my question, next question would be for the staff, is how do we, like, moving forward, you know, I'd like to look at an ordinance on how we deal with this. But then, how, how would this be, if we pass it today, would we be able to incorporate that into, into the, to this developer's criteria?
Council President, Council Vice President, Penya, I would think that we can, staff can certainly work on an ordinance moving forward to where we incorporate that into development agreements moving forward. But I, I, I wouldn't know, in terms of this particular development agreement, if that would be an amendment that could be done.
Madam President, Council Vice President. So this is an EC tonight. So as you know, council can't not make amendments to an EC. It's just, it's approved or voted down in the form that it comes to us. But if that was something that wanted to be incorporated later, it could perhaps be done as an amendment to the development agreement.
Okay.
At a later date.
Madam President.
Madam President, Madam Vice President, the unique, this project is super unique because it is a transit-based project. So it is built into maximizing the opportunity for the individuals living to use transit. So we have incorporated mass transit in the essence of the building. And so I think when we look at the numbers, it might make it feel a little off-base from others. But in perspective of what you're thinking about in terms of development agreements, and when we build affordable housing, and really making sure that we are planning for parking, and, or, I'm sorry, available parking, and, and ensuring that we don't have any kind of favoritism or discriminatory related to parking adjacent to those developments, we can absolutely work with you to think about how to, how to develop something that really does ensure individuals have access close to where they live, as well as access to transit in both cases.
Madam President, thank you. I appreciate that. So, you know, with that, I'll support this, but I really want to, you know, sit down and meet, and so we can discuss that. Even with Sawmill, I know that there's a lot of people, it's, there's lots of affordable housing, Land Trust, Debbie O'Malley, amazing job there. But, but a lot of the people who are living there are receiving citations really, really expensive. So, thank you for that. Madam President, with that, I'd move approval.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Feeblecorn. And I do know, Counselor, Madam Vice President, I know that Ms. Velardi is online, and she did raise her hand, but if you want to make sure to circle back with her, unless you want to have an answer right here and now, if you want to talk to her more offline or online.
I think, yeah, we still have another opportunity.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Councilors, any other questions or comments? The motion is for approval of EC 440. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor Graut, EC 486?
Thank you, Madam President. EC 486 is the fiscal year objectives report. Madam CAO, in our 2440 Human and Family Development Goal, Objective 15, Triple H was asked to conduct a comprehensive study to evaluate the effectiveness of the Albuquerque Housing Authority and the Triple H, and Triple H in addressing the housing needs of the city. The administration responded in EC 2586, or 486, that all the information was provided in October 2024. We've asked for that information to be provided again, and have not received it. And we've asked that because we cannot, we haven't been able to find it. So can you please provide that information to us again by the, by Friday?
Madam President, Counselor Graut, that was actually-
Madam President, Counsel Grouse, that was actually sent to you this morning.
Oh.
So it was, I will make sure it was sent to council staff. I will make sure it is sent to all councils.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. I, I move a do-pass.
This motion will be a receipt, be noted.
I move a receipt, be noted.
Thank you, Counselor. There's a second from Counsel Feeblecorn. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I bring this up during our budget season, but I think I bring it up again here. This document that we got with the objectives, it has the objective statement, but it again doesn't tell me what the metric goal is for that objective. So we have Gateway Medical Sobering, 'cause that one's an easy one. We know if it needs to be operational by fiscal year 25, easy. But for some of the other ones, how would we actually gauge that we finished these objectives, that we've met these objectives?
Madam President, Counsel Rogers, I appreciate the comment because I like numbers and I like things that are measurable, so I know whether or not we have success. I do my own side-scratch work to make, to, to kind of monitor these things. So when there are numbers in them, they, they, we are monitoring those numbers and we are reporting on those numbers. For example, you know, economic development has trained a minimum of 300 employees and 100 businesses through JTA, and then they track those numbers and report on them. And so we can make sure that we, when there are numbers in the statements, that we are reporting numbers in those outcomes, or at least acknowledging if the number's missing. I think we do a pretty good job of it, but it is a narrative that you have to read through in this format.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for that. I think that will help during the budget season, 'cause, you know, I think it's not a surprise. I like the budget a lot and the budget processes and how it all works, but I don't, I would like to get to a point as a counselor where I can look at these metrics and say, yes, this department is performing, or no, they're not, and maybe we need to move that budget to a more efficient department. And I, we can't get to that level of specificity in looking at our department performance. So I think that would be helpful. Thank you so much.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? All right, the motion is, I flipped the page again. Thank you. The motion is for receipt, be noted, of EC 486. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Counsel Lewis, you, yes? Yes, okay. That passes unanimously. All right, just as a little heads up for the audience, I really, I apologize in advance, but we will be going to dinner shortly before general public comment tonight. I try really hard to do it in advance, but we're gonna, that's, that's your notice. Please. Counsel Sanchez, R 171.
Thank you, Madam President. R 71, amending the adopted capital improvement program for the City of Albuquerque Aviation Department by transferring funds to existing projects, appropriating funds for passenger facilities, charges, PFCs, appropriating investment funds, approving new projects, closing projects, and accepting federal and state grant funding. I'm part of FGO and is part of the, the group that passed this through FGO, but when, when, right after FGO, I ended up doing a little bit of traveling and I walked through the airport and there was something I didn't see on this. And what I didn't see, what I, when I walked through the airport, I saw a 40 by 30 sign, a banner that was in the middle of the airport, talking about a new observation deck coming in. So I just have some questions on this bill, and so I'd like to ask those questions of, of the administration before this passed because me as a constituent of Albuquerque, me as a citizen of Albuquerque, and also a city counselor, I don't remember anybody talking about a brand-new observation deck at the airport until I saw that massive banner as I happened to go through the airport. I'm not sure if any of you have been in the airport within the last month and have seen that banner, but it's, it's huge. I mean, the banner had to have cost thousands of dollars to build. So I don't even know if the citizens of Albuquerque even heard, heard that they're looking at an observation deck. Well, I know for a fact that there was an observation deck built there over 20 years ago, and with that observation deck, it was on the wrong side of security. When you have security, everybody goes through security, it's on the wrong side of security. You wanna use an observation deck for people who come to the airport, hang out, wanna look at the different, different amenities that the airport has, wanna look at the airplanes, wanna look at the, the museum features that are there, and then actually go up maybe to the observation deck and watch a few airplanes land and take off. But every single person that goes, that would be utilizing this observation deck as 20 years ago, they're going straight to their gates and they're not going to the observation deck. So I don't see it on this. So I just wanna ask a few questions about it. It looks to me that, that we're getting an observation deck without any of us here on this dais weighing in, so I hope, you know, the administration can answer the questions, and I'd move a do-pass and possibly a deferral after we have our discussion.
The motion is for a do-pass. Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second from Madam Vice President or Counsel Champagne. Counsel Sanchez, your questions?
Thank you, Madam President. What's the $7 million in lines 28, 29, and R 25-171-4? And can you break it down and the source and the intended uses?
Madam President, Counsel Sanchez, we have Acting Director Manny Manriquez, who has overseen our full renovations here and ready to answer questions.
Good evening, Counselors, Counsel President Bassan, Counsel Sanchez. So the $7 million allocation in question is for the construction scope of the observation deck build-out that you, that you raised. I do think it's very important to address the purpose of the observation deck and actually have some kind of exciting news to share with you tonight about that. So this is the final phase of our Dream of Flight renovation project, which I've overseen since the beginning of construction. Construction will start in our slow season in January, so we've been very deliberate to avoid the busy travel season of La Fiesta and holidays, but it is very exciting for our city and for the Sunport. I think as many of you know, we've been ranked among the top 10 airports in the country by the Washington Post. And really what this will do is add not only the build-out of the observation deck itself, but bump out that, that space to create an outdoor patio that will allow not only passengers, but also other visitors to our airport to see the airfield activity. And the way we're gonna do this is we're working on a program we call the Flyside Pass, and that will enable people to apply through a portal and get almost instantaneous approval or denial to go through the TSA checkpoint to the secure area of our airport and actually support our vendors, all of our local vendors in the Ascend small, small kiosk program, the concessions program that we're rolling out with all the local businesses represented, and also to frequent the observation deck once it's built out and be able to, to have that, you know, really unique experience of viewing the airfield from that vantage point. This is really actually answering a call that we've had from many of our constituents saying they miss those old days, where they could really have a great view of the airfield and see airplanes take off and land. And so this is gonna provide that opportunity for our, our passengers and also our residents who don't, who aren't flying that day.
One second. So you're saying that that $7 million is in fact for the, the observation deck?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then what did you call these fly passes? What did you call them?
Flyside pass.
Flyside pass?
Flyside pass.
Okay, so do these flyside passes cost extra?
No, there's no cost.
And how are they implemented?
So there's a system that the TSA maintains called Aptero, and other airports throughout the country do have this program. There's, there's a number of them popping up around the country. A, an interested party would essentially go to our website. They would fill in the personal information into the system and, and essentially they'd get an almost instantaneous response, just like you do when you take your ID to the TSA checkpoint and you hand over your ID to a TSA agent and they scan it. Those, that's the very same system that we'd be implementing through our website to get.
Don't they already have a TA pre-check?
That would be different. That's just for travelers. So this, the flyside pass is for non-travellers. So residents who wanna go and do some holiday shopping, who wanna go with their families to, to go to one of the restaurants, the food and beverage establishments, they'll have an opportunity to apply and get in that same day or another day if they're applying.
Don't they still have to go through the checkpoint?
Yes, they do have to go through the checkpoint.
So that doesn't sound convenient. And what exactly, can you break down the $7 million? What, what's expected, what's it expected the fund? And if you can break that whole down, that, that whole thing down for me?
Sure. So, so basically the $7 million is that first investment in our construction costs. We don't yet know the full construction cost, but we haven't gotten to that phase of the process yet where the guaranteed maximum price has been established, but that's, that's our investment in the construction costs, and it's all for construction. So the design is covered already and we are in, we're just, have just completed the schematic design phase.
So are you, I, I didn't understand that. So you're saying that's your first investment, but you don't have the max price yet?
We don't have the guaranteed maximum price yet.
Okay, and, and why not?
That's part of the C Mar process that we're in now, so since we're adding this scope of the observation deck to the Dream of Flight renovation project, later on this calendar year, when we're working with construction documents at the 30% threshold, we can begin to have the construction company scope out exactly how much it's going to cost to do the build-out.
So right now, we're actually asking the public to, to put out one, $7 million for the first investment, and we don't even have a price for the max project. And then we're looking at other areas of our budget when we need, when we need issues, when we have issues in parks. So this is just not making sense to me. All righty, so the next question is... What would you say the percentage of, of your first investment is going to be? What percentage of the total cost would it be? 10%, 20%, 15%?
It will cover, Counsel President Bassan, Counsel Sanchez, that initial investment will cover most likely more than half of the construction costs. I do wanna provide one clarification. This is from the Aviation Enterprise Fund, not the general fund, so just to be clear.
Okay.
It comes from, from our enterprise.
Got it. So do we have any of the current engineers speculating what it would cost? I mean, I, to be, to be a really good management manager of, of the airport and manage the airport's funds, this is, should, the actual total cost should, you should know that. Why don't you know that? There should be some sort of engineering, some, something that, that could tell us what the total cost is and know what the total cost is right up front so we can actually have a good idea on how we should proceed up here.
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, I would not, I would not venture a guess at this moment other than to say that I believe that this $7 million investment will cover more than half the construction cost, but I don't think it'd be responsible of me to put out a number into the public until we have done the analysis that is pending.
How about an estimate? How about an estimate?
I, I don't have one other than to say that that will cover the majority of the construction.
Well, you told me that it possibly would cover at least 50% of the cost, so you're saying that we're looking at about a $14 million project? Is it safe to say that?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, it could be that much. Could also be less.
Okay, and then is this actually added as just a CIP cleanup or is there a change order as well added?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, there, there would be a change order to the Dream of Flight C Mar project in order to allocate this funds.
And what, what's the total amount for that project in reference, that you're gonna do the change order to?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, currently the total amount is about $89 million, $89.7 million.
Okay, and I know this council's approved a certain percentage. What's the percentage of the 89 million that this, that this will cover and is allowable by a change order?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, this would be in addition to that cost because the cost I just mentioned is for the core renovation project, that it was established as part of the C Mar process a couple of years ago.
So it's a change order and an additional $7 million?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, it would be a change order to encompass the scope of the observation deck and yes, it would be the $7 million plus whatever else.
So it could even be even more if you incorporate the change order plus the possible $14 million?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're asking.
So I'm just saying, explain to me how that breaks down, the change order versus the, the, this, this CIP money that you're getting.
Okay, Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, so the $7 million allocation is part of this CIP cleanup. We know we're gonna need those funds to start and get a substantial way along the process of doing this construction build-out.
Okay, so I'm still kinda confused. Is half would be $14 million?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, the $14 million figure that you're stating right now is not, that's not something that I would state today. I don't have that level of certainty about the construction costs.
Okay, so you said, what's the total amount of this, the, the change order contract again?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, we don't yet have the total amount. We're working with Jane's Corporation, which is the C Mar on this project. Once they establish the guaranteed maximum price, that's how we then establish the contractual amount and push through the change order that would encompass the entirety of the budget for the project.
So now I'm really confused, 'cause you said it was part of the original job, so now why are you adding the change order? I'm, I'm, I'm just totally confused.
Sure. Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, we always knew we were gonna do the observation deck build-out, but we didn't, we didn't include that in the core renovation project.
Why not?
So this is, this is an additional project.
Why wasn't it included in the first place? If you were thinking about it long-term, why doesn't all of us know and why doesn't the public know?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, that's because we had not determined yet what the scope would be of the, the observation deck. We knew what the rest of the scope would be, but we were in discussions where we wanted to do something really great for the passengers and also the residents of the city, and so at this moment, you know, we're, we're talking about just that piece, that final piece of the Dream of Flight renovation. And so we're, we're really treating this as an extension of the core project.
I still don't understand why we need an observation deck when it failed before. That's my biggest issue.
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, the reason for it is, is really to invest in a world-class airport. We, we have a wonderful airport.
We just, we, sorry, we just, we just became like you, by your words, one of the top 10 airports in the nation without, without the observation deck.
Counsel President.
And not only that, hold on, let me finish one more time.
Of course, of course.
And not only that, is I just recently heard that the Director of Aviation, Mr. Richard McCurley isn't, no longer the Director of Aviation. Is that true?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, that's correct. Director McCurley did depart for another airport. That's, that's why I'm Acting Director right now. To answer your, your previous question, I'd like to see us get number one in the country. We should. We should, we should shoot for the stars. We have a wonderful airport. It's a, it's a, it's a point of pride for our city. We are enhancing our city by showcasing all these local businesses, micro businesses. We should celebrate that and we should, we should be proud that we have the revenue at the airport to make investments like this in the customer experience.
And how much longer will this take to build based on the fact that we've had our airport torn up for many, many months now?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, we would be complete in about a year from now. However, the impact to all the other spaces in the airport would be quite minimal. It's really located just in that one space, so all the rest of the concessions program is able to complete the openings and function fully.
When do you think we will get the guaranteed maximum price?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, I believe we will get the GMP close to the end of this calendar year.
Can you get it sooner for all of us, the citizens of Albuquerque?
Counsel President, Counsel Sanchez, I will do my very best to get it as soon as I can.
Okay, let's see. Got a couple other questions that I wrote. Is there any restaurants or any concession areas that are gonna be underneath the observation deck? concession areas that are gonna be underneath the, uh, observation deck that will be affected?
Council President, Councilor Sanchez, there will be, uh, there, there's a restaurant by the name of Burke Brews. It's a full-service sit-down brew pub, and that's on the third level. The observation deck is on the fourth level. And so, yes, that, that restaurant is right underneath the observation deck level.
Let's see.
Council Sanchez, do you have more?
Yeah, I might have one more question, but I'm trying to find it here.
While you look for that, may I go to Council Feebelcorn?
Yes, you sure can, thank you.
Council Feebelcorn?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, while we're talking about the airport, um, I just, uh, wanna say how exciting the Ascend program is. And, um, when are we going to get the Flight Side Pass program up and running?
Council President, uh, Councilor Feebelcorn, so, um, we're right now in the federal approvals process. Um, we have cleared one very important, uh, piece of that process, where TSA has reviewed and approved our use of the Aptero system. Uh, so the next steps are to amend our airport security plan, um, which does take, take some time and it's in the hands of the federal government. Uh, so we, we, we do need to kind of, uh, have some patience with them. We're in a government shutdown, as, as I think we all know. Um, but, uh, as far as what we can control today, and if the federal process doesn't drag on unnecessarily, then I think we can have it ready within a couple of months.
Thank you, Madam President. This is really exciting. I, um, several councilors were, um, able to go to the Ascend graduation and purchase, um, in my place, like, way too much from these nine amazing kind of micro businesses that are really starting to take off at our airport. And I'm really excited that we can continue to support them, have more people go out with the Flight Side Pass and the observation deck to really start bringing in more business, more business for those incredible, um, small businesses that are also equity-based and local. And so I'm just really excited about the idea and thank you for all your work to make this happen.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'm gonna come back to you, Councilor Sanchez, in just one minute, but I also want to ask a question as well regarding the observation deck being after security. I would assume that that should probably, I, I would think the reason is, is because of F A A regulations and travel safety. In my opinion, is that, do, where the observation deck was located, is that part of F A A guidelines and requirements?
Uh, Madam President, uh, not necessarily, um, but it is the best vantage point where you can get an unobstructed view of the airfield. Um, and so that's, I, I believe that's why we had it built, or the city had it, had it built a couple of decades ago. We do have a public side observation area, uh, that's right off of, um, a Gerard. However, there's a fence that you have to look through in order to see the airfield. So the nice thing about this observation deck is we'll have glass walls, we'll have an outdoor patio area that's bumped out from the, from the main space of the observation deck and really a clean, more unobstructed view of all the aircraft out on the airfield.
Thank you for that. I can say that, uh, when I travel, I would prefer people have to go through security if they're going to be able to access the travel gates. Thank you. Council Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President, I really appreciate it. So, the last question that I have is that every single gate at our airport has large windows and every single gate can actually see, um, pretty much everything that the observation deck can see. Um, and that being said, I just don't agree with the, with the amount of spending. I really think that the citizens of Albuquerque need to, need to weigh in on this, and I don't think they have. Have the city of Albuquerque, um, constituents weighed in on this? And what have you done in reference to them weighing in?
Um, Council President Bassam, Councilor Sanchez, um, essentially, I think what you're getting at is whether we've had the adoption of the public and appreciation of the public of, of things like the observation deck and other amenities. I can tell you from, from my vantage point and working with the public and really being the person over the last year, uh, few years who's, who've engaged with the public, they're excited about this. Um, all, all of the things that we're doing at the airport. I wanna stress a very important point. The Fly Side Pass, the observation deck, all the other amenities that we're putting together at the airport, this is what supports the local businesses and the Ascend A B Q program, those micro businesses that are in the airport. This is what's gonna help make them successful. So I do strongly believe from all my conversations I've had in the community that there's excitement about that objective and that the community is behind us when we are putting front and center, a sense of place and celebrating all the wonderful products and the food and beverage that we produce here in Albuquerque and around the state.
I still not convinced that it's on the right side of, uh, of security. Um, we've tried this before. This is something that, uh, we've tried twenty years ago. And I remember going up to the observation back deck and nobody was in the observation deck. No one sat in there. People went straight to their, were straight to their gates and as soon as they got off the airplane, they didn't hang around. They went straight to pick up their luggage and out the door. And I just don't think it's a, it, it's something that would make or break, um, our top one, one percent or to top ten percent of our aviation, um, being one of the best airports in, in the nation. Um, and I think that we could probably find a little bit better, um, use by maybe building up some of these, these other projects that you're looking at. So with that, um, if there's no other discussion, I think it's really important that, that we defer this and see if there's a way to, to actually make sure that, one, the public wants it, two, every single, every single, um, counselor wants it. And then also make sure that it, that we're doing the best that we can for, for the airport. And to tell you the honest truth, when I've asked since then, over the month, and I'm not asking everybody that's walking through the airport, I'm asking the citizens of Albuquerque and they, then the first thing out of their mouth is, didn't we already have a failed, um, observation deck? Why are we doing that again? And so that's what I'm getting from the constituents who I've talked to. So I don't mind deferring this to hear a little bit more, even to the next meeting, um, just so we can hear a little more from the constituents. Um, you can give us a little bit broader, um, information. That would be something you could work on, so that you can give this council a little more information in reference to what the final cost would be. Information that, um, when this is gonna be expected to be open? How many, uh, how long is it gonna take to get it open? So that, you know, what's the, what's the amount, what's the timeline? So that we're not in constructing, construction for so, for so long at the airport? And that we can get back to business? I mean, that's what we're, what we're really needing to see in reference to, um, making sure that this is an actual viable, uh, project. And I think we can get that done within a couple of weeks before the, before the next, uh, meeting. Um, because there's a lot of other things on this bill that we need to look at. But this is something that I think is important.
Council Sanchez, before we go to any kind of additional motion, there's Council Rogers that had something else to say, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I just wanna point out, there's like twenty-some things in this, in this resolution outside of the, um, observation deck, which this is my district and I am absolutely in touch with my constituents, not just travelers, but folks about missing the observation deck during the renovations. This was something that we've talked about a lot in, in the community, that folks noticed that, and I'm sorry that you didn't know, we had an observation deck that didn't fail. It's been open, um, and was closed just for the renovations. And people absolutely have called out asking for this observation deck. Um, but I wanna point out for your district, at the Double Eagle Airport, there are several things that we need to close out with A A, F A A grants that I don't think you wanna defer. Um, and we, there's so many other things that we need in here, like perimeter road rehab for the main airport, a fire suppression design, that's very needed. So I, I personally don't wanna see this deferred, just because one counselor doesn't like the observation deck, um, because it's always been there. Um, and it just was closed recently for renovation, correct? And it's something that people miss and want. Um, and I'm, I've done several tours, um, and been a very, um, key part of the Ascend program. And for our local businesses, um, the observation deck is a nice touch. Um, and nothing different than any other airport that has ticket options or, or pass options to get past security. They still have to go through security, they still gotta get the scan, body scan, still gotta take off the shoes, all the things, to get back to the observation deck. So we're keeping people safe at the airport by giving access to our airport in a new way. Um, that is absolutely good for our constituents and good for the city of Albuquerque. But I would hate for us to hold up things like the fire suppression design, because someone doesn't understand that we've always had an observation deck. Um, and it was only recently closed for the renovations. So I just have to point those things out. Storm drainage, drainage rehab is in here, inline our baggage system. Um, having my bag got stuck in the, in there recently, that's really needed by our constituents and travelers. And we have a million visitors right now to the airport for the balloon fiesta. The observation deck would be an amazing feature, um, for those travelers. So I would ask, as the sponsor, that we do not defer. Um, and I will count that as my close, Madam President, if that's okay?
Thank you, except for this is not your bill to close, Counselor, so we're gonna keep going. Uh, Counselor Champagne?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just out of curiosity, and trying to decide where to go with this and listening to both sides, she pointed out a lot of things that weren't part of the observation, uh, deck. If this is deferred for two weeks, um, well, let me put it this way. If it passes tonight, are those things gonna be implemented in the next two weeks? The money that's being put for fire suppression, roads, perimeter, all that stuff, is that gonna be, is two weeks gonna? In those two weeks, is all that gonna be implemented?
Uh, Council President, Councilor Champagne, we would not be able to, uh, expend those funds until they're authorized by the state.
I understand that. Are you planning to expend those funds in two weeks?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, so if it is deferred for fourteen days, it is not gonna lose a step in the process of you guys expending that if it's approved in the next meeting?
Council President, Councilor Champagne, uh, I believe it's, it's fairly critical to get moving on several of these projects.
Understandable.
As the Acting Director of the airport, I would much prefer that we're able to expend the funds and move forward on things like the fire sprinkler system, baggage handling system. So, uh, for an airport that operates like a business, time, time is money.
Un, completely understandable. Uh, and Madam President, we're still talking about government operations that doesn't move quickly on anything. So, um, we know if it is deferred, that two weeks is not gonna, you're not gonna blow a hundred and, you know, the fourteen million dollars in two weeks, correct? Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rogers, I apologize, I realize this is your bill. I should, I wanna clarify, this is your bill by request. However, Counselor Sanchez is who pulled it, so I wanna make sure to iron that out. So Counselor Sanchez, if you wanna ask your question and then hopefully do a short close, that would be great.
Thank you. Um, I, I recognize that there's a lot of stuff that's on this bill that's important. Um, you know, it's pretty obvious. But one of the things, more than anything, is when you look at the transparency of everything, that's what gets me, is the transparency. And all I wanna do is just ask the questions and put it out there so that you guys can give me some of the answers to these questions. What the timeline is going to be, what the amount it's gonna cost to, to actually do this. I mean, these are just simple questions that we should have already known, but we didn't. You know, I didn't realize this happened until I had to walk down through the airport and see a forty by thirty, um, banner that probably costs a lot of money for the taxpayers, just the banner itself. And that's all I'm looking for, is I'm looking for answers to why we didn't know, why this wasn't on the bill, um, how much it's gonna cost, um, what the change order is. And not only that, um, like you said, it's the seven million is the first investment. None of those things, none of, none of those things have ever been talked about at all in reference to these items that we're, that we're dealing with. And all I'm asking is for explanation, to see what we need to make the best decision for our airport. And I honestly have gone up to the, uh, observation deck during the, during the times. And I don't see, I, you know, since it's been open for years and nobody's ever up there. You know, and so that's the key. That's what I'm worried about. Are we spending taxpayer money? Are we spending these funds in the right place? What if we aren't? What if there's other areas in the airport that could use this to make the airport better? You know, those are the kinds of things that we need to all be looking at and thinking about. And like I said, all I'm asking is a two-week deferral, so that you can give me a little bit more information, give us and the public a little bit more information, so we can help with this decision as well. You know, if the public comes out and says, hey, let's do this, then let's do this. If the public comes out and says, hey, we don't want this, then we'll be listening to the public. And that's it.
Counselor, did, did you wanna make a motion for a deferral?
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion for a deferral, um, for two weeks till the next meeting. Um, and just if you, and just to get those questions answered. Um, and that's basically it. Uh, we already determined that it's not gonna be a huge amount of time and it's not gonna hurt, hurt this airport to the, to the detriment. All we want is answers, and that's it.
There's a motion for a deferral for two weeks, is there a second? There's a second from Counsel Champagne. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? Counsel Lewis, which? No? Okay, thank you. Three to six, I believe, is the vote, that fails. So now we are back on the bill with a due pass. Uh, and there was a second. All those in favor of a due pass, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Uh, we are going to take a thirty-minute break. We will be back here, I say thirty minutes, but it's very loose.
Thank you so much. We are back from our break. We're going to start with announcements. Counselor Grouse?
Madam President, there will be an Intergovernmental Legislative Relations Committee meeting on Wednesday, October 8th at 3:00 PM via Zoom Video Conference. That's in two days.
Counselor Feeblecorners?
Madam President, there'll be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, October 15th at 5:00 PM here in Chambers, and it'll be a hybrid meeting.
For the record, Counselor Champagne is excused for the rest of the evening. There are no financial instruments, no appeals, and we will move on to general public comment. Members of the public can provide live public comments to counsel in person or virtually if they have signed up for public comment per the instructions published on the agenda and on our website Friday. The public comment ground rules are that each participant will have two minutes to present. Comments will be addressed to the counselors only through the counselor, council president, and any disruptive conduct will result in the removal from the meeting. After a two-minute time limit has been reached, a bell will ring to indicate your time is up. Mr. Cornelius, if you'll please call our first speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. Our first speaker is Brick Jonassey, followed by Letz Otvo.
Here he comes.
Letz Otvo.
Wait, wait, we're gonna have, we're gonna have Mr. Jonassey. He's right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Counsel, Madam President, Counselors. So, I want to talk to you guys a little bit about censorship today. So censorship in regards to press, speech, that sort of thing. You'll hear a little bit more about this from Mr. Letz Otvo as well. In short answer, the answer is no. I don't want to be censored. If you want to censor other people, you know, and they agree to it, that's fine. I don't care what decisions they make. I don't want to be censored. When it comes to the projector, from my understanding is it's, the purpose of it is, you know, be able to show you presentation, that sort of thing. I want to be able to utilize the tools just as much as anybody else. But regardless of that, I did want to speak on a couple of other things. Your police downtown, I've seen them doing better without the horses than with the horses. Me personally, I don't like the horses on the sidewalk. That's me. What you're doing, when you're doing that, is you're actually making it more difficult. And also, when the police are shining their big lumens, that's worse than if the establishment there at the library is doing it. Because, you know, if people sue the library, that's one thing, you know? But if they're suing the city, that's a whole nother thing, then you guys are liable. So keep that in mind whenever you're sending the officers down there. And then, the other thing is, the police on the streets. I want to believe that they're doing a good job. Sometimes they're not. Sometimes they're rude, sometimes they cuss, right? And defining profanity, that's going to be very difficult. I'm not into defining it. I believe that everybody has the right to say what they want to say, to basically be able to press. And yes, there's some things that the court rules against, but, you know, those things are different. So, thank you.
Letz Otvo, followed by Francesco Artist.
Overhead, please. I'm not going to use my tablet tonight. I didn't have anything planned to actually use. I think it's important to note that, before I give you the yin, let me give you a little yang, or vice versa. Thank you, Counselor Grouse, for putting out that little thing that happened Saturday night in District 9, where I reside, in the area I reside. And I thank you, Mr. Baca, for appearing at the Northwest event, for the planning commission there with the land use. On a not so lighted note, having received this email in the mail, it kind of troubles me, because you're looking for consistency from what I hear. However, if I was to take a disc or a thumb drive and bring it to the records department, they wouldn't let me reuse it again. They want to get their 879 for another request. Because they're worried about what I might bring in and damage your system with some malware or whatever. But at the same time, you want me to put a video that I've made. Some will be good, some will be bad. You can look at the events that we post. They're not all bad. And when I say bad, it's bad as a reflection upon what's seen, not that I choose to put out bad material. You can read it for yourself. There's no consistency there. Why should I be asked, it was a request, it's not a, it's not a demand, but why would anybody ask to review a video that I would show during my one and a half, or one minute or two minute public commenting time? A video is nothing more than a series of pictures that did not break any of your rules. It's on an eight and a half by eleven and a half, eight by eleven and a half inch tablet presented. And I will mention one other thing real quick. It's a shame to have this fine gentleman's channel taken down while he's giving his public comment at the last meeting. Thank you.
Francesco Artist, followed by Lisa Kristofferson.
We haven't seen Mr. Artist this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Lisa Kristofferson, followed by Dennis Curtis.
Thank you very much, Madam President Hassan and City Counselors. I'm here again, of course, ICE, National Guard, and a black man who was killed in Albuquerque that we need answers for. So due process was included in the very first amendment, in the Bill of Rights to protect people from and against government decisions that deprive. Due process is needed and essential to ensure fairness in all legal matters. The Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments explicitly state, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law under any circumstance." And of course, I'm thinking about Chicago. The government is required to respect due process before it can take action that affects a person's life, liberty, or property. The Fifth Amendment gives protection from the federal government regardless of where American lives in this country, including Albuquerque. So my question continually, why are we allowing federal agents to kidnap and abduct without proving that the detainment or the deprivation of liberty is lawful and that there's a warrant? Aren't you all supposed to be for rule of law? When I look at what's happening in Chicago, and now we know that that landowner, that property manager was from out of state, called ICE on those own people because they'd been complaining they didn't have what they needed at that apartment complex. So they called ICE and they took everybody, black, brown, didn't matter, they were all American citizens, except for some of them, zip tied. I believe that kind of a thing could happen here. We had a Democratic governor and a Democratic mayor who pulled a Trump before Trump even pulled a Trump and sent in a National Guard. I am not even exaggerating when I say that there are truly fears in our community that we are not safe and that anybody black or brown, or speaks Spanish, is going to get hauled off by somebody we don't even know if they're an actual agent. Can you not strengthen our laws so that we can be safe?
Dennis Curtis, followed by Roberta Curtis. Roberta Curtis, followed by Loretta Naronho Lopez. Loretta Naronho Lopez, followed by Jessica Saxton.
Good evening, City Council President and Counselors. My name is Loretta Naronho Lopez. I'm here as the president of Santa Barbara Martinist Town Neighborhood Association and also a member of the Stark Neighborhood Alliance. And we're asking that the City Council reject the Lups report and make an amendment to remove 101 Lomas Boulevard and 229 Broadway Northeast from the downtown MRA redevelopment plan. And the understanding from the City of Albuquerque is that our MRA doesn't exist, but according to the planner that developed, that wrote the plan and also was part of the MRA office, she says it does exist. And so does John Q Hammond's Industries Embassy Suites that used the MRA. And the MRA was used at that time in 2004 and in 2013. So the evidence is there. I've asked you to look at the October 6th letter that I sent today with outlining that this does not meet the MRA requirements. And also that, because these two parcels are not blighted, but also that I'm concerned that Counselor Joaquin Baca was on the advisory committee and should not be voting on this. He should recuse himself. He's also given allocations for $1 million for his area, for downtown, and $800,000. And the council on R24160 voted to give us $250,000 to update our MRA plan. According to the City Finance Department and Terry Bruner, the City Council didn't allocate the funding. So you do vote and not, and there's no funding available for the MRA. So it's concerning to me that these things are questionable. Why our MRA is not accepted? And why isn't there money allocated when we've already asked for a proposal of the scope of work by the site southwest? Why would we go through all that trouble to ask for the scope of work and we get nothing? So I would like you to investigate this. Thank you.
Jessica Saxton, followed by Tanawa Downing.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Saxton. I'm the civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington, DC. I am here to provide notice to the council this evening. This is in accordance with USCS Rules of Civil Procedure, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution for the United States is the overarching requirement that every state must follow. I don't think that any one of you here would disagree with that. States are not able to enact their own alternative legislation and substitute that for the guarantees of the Constitution. That would mean that your state laws are more powerful than the Constitution, and that is simply unlawful. So Clause 1 of Amendment 5, like the previous lady was just speaking about, says that no person should be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment by a grand jury. That also includes our citizens. Unfortunately, your state has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that permits your public officials, your law enforcement officers, your judges, to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment, and that is simply unlawful. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to commit a crime. There are two areas within our Constitution that reinforces this. The first is Article 1, Section 10. And that's where it states that no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of a contract. Your police officers, your prosecutors, your judges, they're all under a contract. You are under a contract. That's a contract to perform based on the oath or affirmation that you took to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. The second area that reinforces is the issue of an emolument violation in paying public officials to commit a crime, is the Fourteenth Amendment. And that's where it states that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall infringe the privileges or immunities of United States citizens. Privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are at a bare minimum those that are enumerated within the Bill of Rights and the First Amendment. So I am here to provide notice and let you know that you cannot continue to pay public officials to commit crimes against the citizens. It is a crime. It is an emolument violation. It is unlawful, and it is illegal. I do have a notice that I would like to put on the record tonight explaining more about this, and I encourage you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Tanawa Downing, followed by Janice Herrera.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. If you can go ahead and give that to the clerk right there, that would be great, Ms. Saxton. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. So my name is Tanawa Downing. I'm a civil rights litigator that Ms. Saxton was just leading into. I'm about to argue this case to the United States Supreme Court on behalf of more than 700,000 people that are currently imprisoned here in America illegally and constitutionally because the states have failed to follow the very basic procedures of process codified in the Constitution for the adjudication of a crime. I want to provide a little bit of clarification, obviously you can understand what was just said and what we're actually asking from all of you. I have approximately 12,000 criminal affidavits on behalf of victims that have been charged by way of information as opposed to indictment from right here within the state of New Mexico. Many are from within this county and the city. These affidavits, they identify two particular crimes, all right? The first is Title 18, subsection 242, which is deprivation of rights under color law. The second is Title 18, USC subsection 241, which is conspiracy to deprive of rights. So law is a criminal conspiracy with regard to public officials, all of you, that states that any person who, having knowledge of any of the wrongs, conspired to be done and who have the power to prevent or aid in the prevention of the commission of the same neglects or refuses to do so, may be held as defendants in the action. So upon having been provided this notice, letting you know that your agents, the law enforcement whom you will pay, are acting unconstitutionally by relying upon an inferior statute to abridge their obligations codified in the Constitution of the United States of America, I'd ask you guys, please, let's work together to fix this problem. Because the alternative is that I will have to convert these criminal affidavits into criminal complaints, and I don't want to do that. That's not the path that I want to go down. All right? Now, I know that you guys are going to go and you're going to ask the attorney as soon as we're done, whether or not what I'm saying is true, and that attorney's going to point you to a case from 1884 called Hurtato versus California. And before you choose to rely upon that as a foundation, I must remind you that the Constitution of the United States of America is the foundation, not a judge-made ruling. Supreme Court of the United States has no constitute authority to be able to alter, amend, or destroy any of the provisions or guarantees of the Constitution, because that must be done by an authentic act of people in accordance with the special remedy procedure of Article 5. Furthermore, judges cannot legislate, we know that, because Clause 1, Article 1 says, "All legislative power is vested in Congress of the United States." So I pray that you guys are going to make the right decision here. I know it's a tough one. You guys are going to have to decide as soon as we're done whether you're going to go and you're going to follow a judge-made ruling, the lowest form of law, or the object to which your fidelity is bound, the Constitution for the United States of America. But just to leave you with this, I want to say that the United States Circuit Court has identified that an erroneous view of the law is an automatic abuse of discretion. An erroneous view of law would be in your legal contemplation, the lowest form of law, a judge-made ruling is superior to the Constitution for the United States of America. That would be an obvious erroneous view of law. Thank you, guys, so much. God bless, and have a great rest of your night.
Janice Herrera, followed by Adele Rose Bennett Herrich.
Good evening, Council President, members of the council. My name is Janice Herrera. I'm a resident of District 2. Today, as I walked in, I saw signage for a rosary rally on the plaza. This is timely, because yesterday, a woman I know asked me to pray for her. This is a person who's touched my heart, and I've held her in my thoughts today, but additionally, I ask each of you who hold power to reflect on actionable measures to mitigate this ongoing crisis situation. This woman has shown me her kindness by, one, years ago, when I started doing mutual aid, I was carrying a box of food and dropped car keys out of my pocket unnoticed. This woman, who is unsheltered, ran down the block, picked them up, and brought them back to me. I've also seen her make great personal sacrifices to care for her pet, providing him with food, water, and even first aid. Yesterday, when I saw this woman, she was in tears. Today, she had a court date related to repeat charges for misdemeanors, public camping, obstructing the sidewalk, and trespassing. She had missed some court dates and had been arrested already. She was afraid of going to MDC and losing her dog, her safety net. About three years ago, less than 10% of the population at MDC was considered transient. Now, more than 50% are transient, with the majority facing misdemeanors or bench warrants associated with those. Criminalization is not conducive to rehabilitation. Poverty is not a crime of the citizen, but it is a crime of the state. One million visitors are expected to temporarily shelter in the metro area for balloon fiesta. While I do welcome balloonatics and the excitement and the revenue that they bring, I question how you all can support funding to leverage this hotel and lodging that we obviously have in great abundance. We have the resources to get the estimated 10,000 people who are unsheltered into decent housing instead of incarcerating or institutionalizing them for existing within the cycle of poverty. I thank you for your attention to this matter.
Adele Rose Bennett Herrich, followed by Tad Nyumizki. Tad Nyumizki, followed by James Shanley.
Would you give me all of the head? Excuse me. Yes, just a second. Thank you. My name is Tad Nyumizki. Now, what I'm showing right here, Consent Agenda, October 6, 2025. Page 1. Now, we'll go to page 2. 3, I mean. Page 2, then go to page 3. Here is what I'm showing. City council violating law, their own charter, and also laws. Not allowing, that is also state constitution. When New Mexico became state jointed union, adopted United States Constitution, same applied. That is further amended and many other laws. So not allowing public speaking on Consent Agenda, hiding. Another word, what they doing? Hiding. Now, let's go farther. Politics and politician. Can we trust politicians? I'm talking about housing, less meaning housing, loan issue. Never mind. Now, what they doing? Manipulating, lying. All saying is, "Do you practice what you preach?" No. That's exactly what they do. They do not.
James Shanley, followed by Janet Sayers on Zoom.
Madam President, councilors, you are all familiar, I'm sure, with the Albuquerque Journal polling reported October 2 of voter perceptions of city performance on the crisis of homelessness. The failing grade would surprise no one who drives around Albuquerque with their eyes open. Yet, citizens of Albuquerque are not seeing any pivoting from a plodding, well-worn path of inadequacy. We do hear tired cliches like, "75% refuse services." But we never hear, "Well, who wasn't who asked the question?" I witnessed two extraordinary events in Albuquerque over the past two weeks. One was a stakeholder committee panel discussion during the public engagement meeting for the State Fair Redevelopment Project. The panel included a neighborhood mom, a decades-long advocate and activist for the unhoused, a formerly homeless person who runs a nonprofit while completing a master's degree at UNM, and the southeast-area commander of Albuquerque Police Department. There was more expression of vision, practical resolve, and willingness to collaborate to fix this in their discussion than I have heard anywhere. The second event was yesterday, where four mayoral candidates, including the mayor, listened to four currently or formerly unhoused people, described the depredations and challenges they have confronted with our system. My read of the faces of the candidates in the room was that each of them learned things they did not know, important things. This existential crisis for Albuquerque is not benefiting from meaningful progress. The gateway system by design will be inadequate for years to come. Yet, we have in our city people with the experience, the knowledge, the skills, and the commitment to contribute substantially to implementation of practical, humane, and effective measures to end the catastrophe and suffering on our streets. Albuquerque can restore its health, safety, and commercial vitality from edge to edge. It's time to bring those people to the table. Thank you.
Janet Sayers, followed by Nicole Finch.
Ms. Sayers, you are muted.
Okay. Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council, and city staff. I'm Janet Sayers. I live in District 9. And first, I just want to thank you for the commitment of all of you to serve on the council and give up time, energy, to make policy and decisions for our city. And so I am here tonight on behalf of the Library Advisory Board and the 19 branches of the Albuquerque-Bernaleo County system. And I'm glad to report that today, the eight of those branches were open. And tomorrow, all 19 branches will be open, with the exception of Alamosa, which has been undergoing renovation and hopefully will be open very soon. That's in Council Penney's district. We are glad to report that through the efforts of the administration and the council, that our library board is continuing the task of really having representation from all areas of the city. And tonight, on the Consent Agenda, there was a person from District 7, and we will be welcoming her to serve. And I also wanted to just comment that we're continuing the efforts to get commitments from various members of the legislature to support capital outlay in this coming session in January. And we are now up to $475,000. And Diane Torres Velazquez, who's a state rep from the northeast area, has made a commitment to support with $50,000. So we're going to keep going, and hopefully, we'll get to our $2 million by the end of this calendar year. But again, thank you for your time, efforts, and your commitment to the city. Thank you so much.
Nicole Finch, followed by Sarah Azibo.
Madam President, councilors, good evening. I'm Nicole Finch, and I'm a member of the Library Advisory Board. October 5 through 11, 2025, is National Banned Books Week. Across the country, we're seeing an increase in attacks on books by and about Black, Indigenous, and people of color, as well as people in the LGBTQ+ community. We're lucky that the book banning element in Albuquerque is small, but it does exist, and we cannot afford to be complacent about it. Our librarians in the Albuquerque-Bernaleo County Public Library System are professionals, trained in librarianship, dedicated to the mission of providing a major information source for the needs of a metropolitan population. If you look at the library's collection development policy, you'll see that the collection they develop also serves the popular and recreational needs of the general public and reflects the racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity of the community. The library upholds the right of the individual to access information, even though the content may be controversial, unorthodox, or unacceptable to others. This Banned Books Week, I thank our library director, Kate Alderete, and all the librarians for the incredible work they do to provide the serious and the silly, the informative and the entertaining for all of us in all our diversity to enjoy. Thank you.
Sarah Azibo, followed by Anami Das.
Good evening, Council President and councilors. I am deeply disturbed by the report of Jayvon Given's death and how it has become public knowledge only recently through social media over one year later. I urge you to get the facts and push to address all issues this brings to light. I have also been frightened and concerned to see unmarked black SUVs being driven by Albuquerque Public School employees. The drivers are identified as school resource officers. In this time of ICE disappearing people in unmarked vehicles, I ask that you investigate this, as I have asked the mayor's staff and the APS superintendent to do. If these employees are to be a resource for families, this is not a friendly signal indicating support, and it incites fear within the community. Additionally, I am still wondering why Robinson Park is roped off and has been for months now. Changing tone, I want to give a huge shout-out to all mutual aid groups across the city. These groups fill the gaps to support community members where city services fail. This has been evident with mutual aid increasing food donations to unhoused relatives across the city, when God's Warehouse was closed, causing great shortage of meals where there is a high need for assistance. Mutual aid groups also stepped up to help relocate job-core youth after the city and county hotel vouchers were ended two weeks ago, before their expiration date, to make room for balloon fiesta tourists. Overnight, these groups rallied to find safe housing options for these young people, transport them to their new residence, collect furnishings for their homes, and offer ongoing support. Currently, they are stepping up to support a number of young children to find a safe home after ICE took their parents from them and left them terrified to return to their Systems of government have a place in our society. They were designed to support community members in times of need. Where these systems are overwhelmed and failing, it is the strength of these community-based mutual aid groups funded by love and monetary donations from individuals that provide real aid. I wish these two structures could work in tandem to uplift us all. I wish the gaps in the systems troubled some of you as much as you're troubled by the cracks in the asphalt and not need of turf turning brown in our desert city. Tonight, I just want to thank those in the mutual aid community who give of themselves to care for others. Thank you.
Anami Das.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. I want to echo the sentiments expressed about Jayvon Given's death and the APD response to it. I'm trying to be very careful with my words out of an abundance of caution for the situation and respect for his family, but it... Sorry, I just read the police report, and it was only like four pages, and that's disturbing in a lot of ways. And again, I don't want to like cast judgment or whatever, but I want to insist that the administration and APD address the issues related to that case in an effort to alleviate the anxiety surrounding the situation. Yeah, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes general public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move on to approvals. Councilor Grouse, OC 51.
Thank you, Madam President. OC 51, it's the Albuquerque City Council Legislative Program for the first session. Actually, it'll be the second session, I think. It's the first session of the 58th session of the New Mexico State Legislature. I move a receipt be noted.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Feeblecorn.
And Madam President, we have several amendments that we'd like to offer.
Let's start with Councilor Rogers. Amendment in your packet, councilors, is A. We'll call this number one.
Thank you, Madam President. And we have it on the screen for everyone. Thank you. I'd like to move Amendment Number 1. In the attachment at the heading for each council district, add the name of the counselor for that district. And when I was reviewing the booklet, I just thought we should include the name of each counselor. They don't all know what our district numbers are. And so just to clean up what's going to the legislature, I'd like to add each of the counselor's names next to their district.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second from Madam Vice President. Just to clarify, is this in addition to the number of the district?
Yes, Madam President. It would be in addition to the number. We're just adding the counselor's name for the district as well.
Thank you. Councilors, any questions or comments? Councilor Rogers to close.
I urge your support.
The motion is for Amendment Number 1 to OC 51. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. We're going to move on. Councilor Rogers, amendment number two.
Thank you, Madam President. Amendment number two is a little longer, just to fix some of the City Council District Six capital outlay requests. First thing we would like to do is delete the request for mobile hygiene trailers. We received our quotes back, and I have enough funding to purchase what I need, so I want to delete that from our requests. I would also like to delete the request for City Council District Six traffic calming and replace it with a new request as possible, just from feedback from legislatures to be specific. We do have ten residential streets that are actually identified through our participatory budgeting project, so I just wanted to call that out. The Highland Multi-Generational Center, I would like to delete that. Our Highland Senior Center does not want to be a multi-generational center, so I want to correct that from our community as well. Number four would be delete the request for Walmart property acquisition, and I just want to update that to say vacant property acquisition and add CVS and Walgreens and some other nuisance properties in my district, to be specific, based on feedback we got from legislators. Five, delete the request public safety equipment, and we're just updating that to be more specific on where the automatic speed cameras would be placed. And we also need trailers, not just speed cameras, so I want to add that. The next one is just clarifying real-time crime centers, specifically things to help District Six specifically, so I wanted to make that clear. Number seven is, at the end of the list for District Six capital outlay requests, we're going to list participatory budgeting. And again, that's just so our legislators know that these requests came directly from the community and not just my wish list. And I urge your support.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Baca. Councilors, any questions or comments? All right, seeing that there seemed to be a close from Councilor Rogers, Madam... All those in favor of amendment number two to OC 51, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Amendment number three is Councilor Grouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Amendment three, in the attachment for City Council Nine capital outlay request, add the following. Gateway Youth Assistance and Housing Navigation Campus Funding for the Next Phase of the Gateway Youth Assistance and Housing Navigation Campus to Acquire Property, Plan, Design, and Construct Housing and Classroom Space. And this request is for Phase Three of the Gateway Youth Assistance to Construct Classroom Space and Additional Housing.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Feeblecorn. Any questions or comments, councilors? Seeing none, the motion is for amendment number three to OC 51. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Amendment number four, Councilor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam President. Floor amendment number four is in the attachment for City Council District Seven Legislative Requests, add the following request. Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative Funding, enact legislation to support and fund the Middle Rio Grande Housing Collaborative, a joint powers agreement between the city of Albuquerque and Burnile County to support and coordinate the acquisition of property, planning, designing, instructing to improve affordable housing in the Albuquerque-Bernile County area.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Feeble... or Councilor Rogers. Councilor Feeblecorn, any additional opening?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just say that this was in last year, and it was a last-minute request from the Rio Grande Housing Collaborative to be included again this year, so we're just doing as they asked.
Councilors, any questions or comments? The motion is for amendment number four to OC 51. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We are on to amendment number five. Councilor Feeblecorn.
Thank you, Madam President. Amendment number five is in the attachment for City Council District Seven Legislative Request, replace the description following restrict fireworks statewide with the following. Amend state law to expand fireworks restrictions statewide and to specifically allow for local social host ordinances for the possession and use of fireworks.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second by Councilor Rogers. Councilors, any questions or comments? Councilor Sanchez?
Yeah, I'm just curious. We have firework displays all over the city that are actually legal displays. Can you give me an idea of how that affects them?
Councilor Feeblecorn?
Madam President, it wouldn't affect them at all. This is an expansion of illegal fireworks. Right now, the city has a prohibition on certain types of fireworks, and this is a working group with state legislators that have been working on ways to expand that prohibition outside of the city of Albuquerque, and also trying to think through how to do social host ordinances so that it would be easier for APD and AFR to cite folks for illegal fireworks use within the city.
Councilor Sanchez?
It also says possession, so if somebody's driving from one state to another and they have... and they happen to get stopped or pulled over, how does that affect an individual who's driving from one state to the other or even across the city limits?
Councilor Feeblecorn?
Madam President, possession of illegal fireworks is already prohibited in the name of illegal fireworks.
Any other questions, Councilor Sanchez?
Yes, so a truck or anybody transporting fireworks, that's 100% illegal, and that's what we're looking at? If you can't... I mean, there's many of... many semi-trucks that drive through our state, transporting commerce from one state to another, so that's also covering them as well.
Madam President, that is the existing situation in the city of Albuquerque. This amendment is to add to my District Seven legislative requests for social host ordinance so that we could further expand the ways in which APD and AFR could enforce our prohibition on illegal fireworks in the city of Albuquerque.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. So the way I read this, though, it doesn't say illegal. It says restrict fireworks statewide, and then you amended to say amend state law to expand fireworks restrictions statewide. It doesn't say illegal fireworks. So is that just implied as part of this language within the state law?
Madam President, yes. This is a working group that has been set up by Representative Dixon, and several of the councillors have been attending as well. And this is the work that they are working on to say ways that we could reduce the amount of illegal fireworks that are being used in Albuquerque. And one of the problems with that is that there are easily accessible illegal fireworks outside of the city of Albuquerque, because they are not illegal outside of the city. And so they are looking at ways to further the restrictions outside of Albuquerque throughout the state of New Mexico, so that we would have fewer illegal fireworks being used in the city of Albuquerque.
Any other questions, councilors? Councilor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. What is a social host ordinance?
Madam President, social host ordinance is a way that we would be able to set up, if it was allowed under state law, that would allow AFR and our APD to cite based on actual use of fireworks on your premises. Right now, one of the biggest problems with citing someone for illegal fireworks use is that we have to have an AFR person kind of standing there, seeing this happen in real time, and it's a criminal offense now. So the idea would be to change it to a civil citation, like we've done on several other things, including animal welfare citations, and then have it where we could use drones or other... you know, somebody could be driving by and see if fireworks... an illegal fireworks set off on your property, and that would be sufficient for a social host ordinance to have a citation against the owner of that property.
Councilor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. What if the person is renting the house?
Madam President, that is all going to be dealt with in the state legislation. Again, this is not city legislation. This is our state request, but there are certainly mechanisms for determining who is in control of the property at the time that the firework is set off.
Councilors, any other questions or comments? I will just add that, I mean, I love fireworks, but I also really like our laws, and so I can understand some of the concern for it. However, I do know that there's several other things that end up in this legislative priorities packet that I don't always agree with, and I don't even... I'm not even saying I don't necessarily agree with this. I just think that for district-specific stuff, there's... I mean, this is kind of how we roll in our big, giant Legislative Asks booklet that gets provided every year. Councilor Feeblecorn to close.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I don't think it's any secret that I think that the big, giant legislative book that we provided the last two years that has no citywide priorities makes any sense at all, and I would oppose the use of that in the future. But the reality is that this is a District Seven legislative request. It's going to be a District Seven legislative request, no matter what this body does, and I don't think that we want to set a precedent of engaging in knocking out other councillors' legislative requests for their district. With that, I urge your support.
Councilors, the motion is for amendment number five to OC 51. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilor Baca, amendment number six.
Thank you, Madam President. Fire Station Six Improvements, Funding to Acquire Property, Plan, Design, Construct, and Equip the Renovation, Updating, and Expansion of Fire Station Six in Albuquerque's North Valley to Meet Current Fire Service Needs. This requests funding to renovate and expand an outdated and undersized firehouse in Albuquerque's North Valley that serves the North Valley and parts of the Northwest Mesa and Northeast Heights.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Feeblecorn. Any additional questions or comments?
Urge your support.
The motion is for amendment number six to OC 51. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Amendment number seven, Councilor Grouse.
Madam President, floor amendment number seven. I would like to... in Council District Nine capital outlay requests, I would like to update the Metropolitan Redevelopment Bond Tax Abatement Financial Incentives, increase Metropolitan Redevelopment Bond Timeline Terms to Further the Ability to Use MRA Bonds to Meet State Housing Milestones in MR Areas. We all know we need to create incentives, or we need more housing, so we need to create incentives for affordable housing and increase the length of the tax abatement for housing development in MR Areas is a great way to do that. This will ask the state to allow us to lengthen the tax abatement, but council will still decide when and where and for how long that abatement should last, and I do urge your support.
There's a motion and a second by Madam Vice President. Councilors, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of amendment number seven to OC 51, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Amendment number eight, Councilor Penya.
Thank you, Madam President. This is your microphone, Councilor Penya. Sorry. I think this is on our iPads. Yeah. So this is floor amendment number eight to OC 2551, and what this is, is in the attachment for the City Council District Three capital outlay request, insert the following request. And I don't know if Councilor Grouse or any other councilors want to be a part of this. I'm doing it as a District Three request, but I met with my... the member from the library board, and as you can see, they're all making some wonderful requests to all our state legislators for library improvements, and this is...
Councilor Penya, I think this is a different one. We just need to change it on the screen, then. It's fine.
Yeah, if you can change it.
But I would like to make sure that we have the library one on the board, then.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I can see it on my phone, but I can't see it that far away.
That's okay. It was the tower was on the screen. That's okay.
What tower library do we have?
So I'll just continue. So this... what it says is funding the Albuquerque Public Library Improvements to Plan, Design, Engineer, Acquire, Ride Away, Construct, Equip, Improvements to the Albuquerque Public Libraries. And speaking with the member, obviously, they're asking for the HVAC system, but we thought to make it more general, so that if they were able to secure more than the money necessary to do the HVAC, they had additional money to improve our libraries here in the city of Albuquerque. So the explanation is request funding to improve public libraries in Albuquerque.
There's a motion for amendment number eight. Is there a second?
I second.
Second from lots of people.
Can I also be on that?
Councilor Grouse would like to be added as a sponsor. Councilors, any other questions or comments? Councilor Penya to close.
I urge your support.
All those in favor of amendment number eight to OC 51, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilor Penya, number nine.
Thank you, Madam President. So amendment...
Councilor Penya, your microphone.
Floor amendment number nine is, in the attachment to the City Council District Three capital outlay request, insert the following. Funding for Tower Road Improvements, Plan, Design, Engineer, Acquire, Ride Away, Construct, Equip, all the general subtitles, just to be able to try to get improvements, basic infrastructure to Tower Road. As you know, I have a few roads in there, like I think there's Sage and Blake, but this is another one. And this requests funding to improve Tower Road in Albuquerque Southwest Mesa to build out a heavily-used collector street to improve traffic flow, and I move a due pass. And this is actually something that the community has been working on, and they've been able to secure money from the state legislature the past two years, and they're going to continue to seek the money.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Grouse. Any questions or comments? Moving on to... so amendment number nine, OC 51. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilors, any other amendments? All right, we are back on OC 51, as amended multiple times. Any questions or comments or anything to add, councilors? Councilor Grouse to close?
I urge your support.
The motion is for OC 51, as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Moving on to EC 493, Councilor Grouse.
Madam President, EC 493 is the 2026 Administrative Legislative Request. I move a receipt be noted.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Rogers. Let's go ahead and go to public comment, and then we will move on to discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Adele Rose Bennett Herrick, which I think is not present, followed by James Shanley. James Shanley.
Madam President, councilors, I realize that what is involved here is largely a formality, but in reviewing the... what you are acknowledging receipt of, there is some cause for alarm, particularly with respect to the homeless initiatives. And having listened to some of you over the past several months at various times, seem to express a little frustration about the transparency and accountability of some of the things that are happening in our city. When I read, "Our immediate focus is to enhance and expand our existing support services," I see a giant déjà vu printed over this page. And I... whether it's possible or not, I would like to urge that council proactively, as these things take shape, scrutinize them closely. For example, establishing and supporting micro-communities. I hope that the next micro-community will be, instead of $194,000 each for the tiny homes, that the Santa Fe supplier, who can install them for $18,000, functionally identical to what stands today on Zuni, might be considered. I also hope that things like tenants' bill of rights and zoning changes are not simply going to be a recycling of already failed and rejected strategies, that you are not going to have to listen to landlords stand before you and tell you that if you pass something, they're going to sell their properties and stop making them available to renters. I guess in summary, I just hope that, given the lack of effectiveness about... with so much of what has been spent over the past seven years, that you will hold the city accountable for a higher standard of execution so that the people who are suffering the consequences can actually get some remedy. Thank you very much.
Madam President, that concludes comment. Thank you.
Councilors, we're back on EC 493. Any questions or comments? Anything to add from the admin?
Madam President, thank you. I just want to point out that we did, in our IGR committee, go through this and to ensure that we complied with our ordinance, obviously sending it forward for... as an executive communication. Just to point out that we have three priority areas identified in our capital program, housing and homelessness, public safety, and quality of life, which has been consistent both last year and this year. And then, of course, we have our Metro Crime Initiative for policy priorities, as well as our Metro Homelessness Initiatives, and our pedestrian and bicycle safety priorities. related to policy and legislation. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And back to Counselor Grouse to close.
I urge your support.
The motion is for a receipt be noted of EC four ninety-three. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We are on final actions. Counselor Baca, O eighty-three by request.
Thank you, Madam President. O eighty-three, repealing Chapter fourteen, Article Five, Part One and Part Two, the flood hazard and drainage ordinances, adopting a new flood damage prevention ordinance in its place and amending the title of Chapter fourteen. I move a do pass.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Rogers. Counselor Baca, did you want to open?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. The ordinance was drafted to comply with the recommendations made by FEMA, after that agency's most recent review of the city's floodplain program. The city of Albuquerque is FEMA's designated floodplain manager for Benaleo County, west of the mountains. Every five years, FEMA reviews the city's floodplain management program, and following the most recent review, requested changes to the floodplain and drainage ordinance. O twenty-five eighty-three incorporates those changes. I urge everyone's support.
Counselors, before we go to that, as a close, any questions or comments? And I do see that we did have one person sign up to speak, but it doesn't look like Mr. Artist is here tonight. So with that, the motion is for O eighty-three. Do pass. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselors Rogers, Grouse, and Baca, R one eighty.
Thank you, Madam President. R one eighty is appropriating funds to serve individuals experiencing substance abuse disorder. Use disorder. I move a do pass.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second by Counselor Grouse. Counselors to open.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is an appropriation for, from our opioid settlement dollars, and it would be to expand the program that we already have currently in ACS for specifically opioid outreach. And what's exciting about this is it's, in the plan that we talked about, we got a presentation from about, from the LGCC and the plan that we put together on how to spend opioid settlement dollars, we really talked a lot about expanding current programs that had good outcomes. And I'm really excited because this program is absolutely that. In ACS, we heard a little bit about it before from our director, Jody Escobal, and really this particular appropriation touches on three different recommendations that we got from Vital Strategies and would allow us to expand the program that we have in ACS. And so I urge your support.
Before we go to an urging, let's go to the public comment. I always hate that part because I don't want people to think we're done, but I know that we have some public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Janice Herrera, followed by Tad Nyuminski.
I'm speaking now as a health promotion specialist at the Health Equity Council. In my role there, I facilitated surveys and focus groups about the spending money with people with opioid use disorder and their families. I also centered these voices at the listening sessions and town halls that were hosted by Vital Strategies. A couple notes, the data that Ellen Braden compiled on spending of the opioid settlement funds to date is really informative. And I would like to remind the council that members of the public have repeatedly asked for an online dashboard tool to track those spending funds in real time and look at incoming projected funds. I do hope to see this still. While I'm excited about the statistics shared in R twenty-five one eighty about the success of ACS outreach navigators and getting clients placed into housing, and would definitely like to see this program grow, I do wonder how the addition of new staff and voucher funding will prioritize specifically people with opioid use disorder and make new housing programs low barrier to entry for those folks. While I would love to see everyone get a voucher across the city, opioid settlement funds in specific were granted in acknowledgement of the deaths and sickness that rippled through our community because of opioids and pharmaceuticals. Funding must have ways to prioritize those most directly impacted please. Also, for those unaware, hotel vouchers have upper limit caps on room rates, and that is why every year people in poverty are pushed out to the streets during balloon fiesta. I commented years previously about picking up an elder in a wheelchair whose heading home voucher ended from the hotel curb for that reason. So, you know, as we look at vouchers, how can we solve that and write it into the contracts as well? Thank you.
Tad Nyuminski, followed by Lindsey Fox.
Would you give me overhead again? Okay, let's go back to topic. Here is, I'm going to file with city clerk office through public records examination. That's what I did mention last meeting. How many people living of support? And how many sources of go to those programs, to these programs altogether? Now, what I can finish, that is highlighted. Rogers, Rogers, Lewis, Lewis, Bassana, Bassana, Philberg, Kohn. Those are hiding, that, this is legislation hiding inside of consent agenda worries, public not allow, say anything. That is ridiculous. Well, then Lewis, don't worry about your trucking job on the highway. State gets plenty, plenty, takes money from refinery, from running all this. So that is, how about casino income and so on? So anyway, that's what I wanted, bring that to attention. You have to love it. Thank you.
Lindsey Fox.
Good evening, Council President and counselors. I'm Lindsey Fox, and I'm the Director for the Center of Inclusive Health at University of New Mexico, and you may know us also as the Mobile Medical Team, the Street Medicine Team. And I'm speaking today in support of this bill as, over the last three years that we've partnered with ACS, we've made incredible strides in providing healthcare directly to those folks on the street, in particularly opioid use disorder, as well as a whole compendium of mental health diseases. And, you know, strategizing with Director Escobal and other members on the team, and actually working and embedded with ACS, we've really made great strides in bringing specifically opioid use disorder treatment, Suboxone, to those on the streets, but also helping them with mental health and other chronically, chronic and acute medical illnesses. And we think that by taking this to the next level, we'll be able to reach more people. We're limited by staff, but also funding, and we hope to expand our services across more of the areas of the cities because right now we're sort of concentrated in areas of high acuity, high utilization that are identified by our ACS partners. So I'm here to answer any questions, but also just want to give my support because as a provider on the street who sat on the curb with folks struggling with substance use disorder, I've really been able to see the synchronicity that ACS navigators, their capacity, along with our teams, can really affect change in our constituents and our neighbors. Thanks.
Madam President, that concludes comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baca?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to, you know, I think about a week, week and a half ago, Counselor Champagne and I joined Director Escobal at the Rockin' Noonday at one of the pop-up events, and Director Fox was there with her team working. And so, A, a very big thank you to Director Fox and what they're doing out there. They're really helping. They're boots on the ground, having an effect right then and there. And not just there, I see them when I walk home pretty regularly. So thank you. Excuse me. So all that said, you know, ACS is not only improving, but they are, they're getting better and better. And they have a track record, and they're keeping stats, and you can actually see the difference that's being made. Absolutely fantastic work, needed work, important work, and so I urge everyone's support on this. Thank you.
Counselor Grouse?
Thank you, Madam President. I too see the great work that Dr. Fox and her outreach team does. They visit a property in my district where they serve a community of folks that need help. They're seeing, they're getting great services and great help, and we're seeing them go back into the community, working, like the people that they're serving, they're now able to function, go to services, get treatment, but they're also going back into the workforce. And so that's, that's a good thing. So I see, I see the great work that she's doing. I would like to ask Doctor, Director Escobal to come forth just to give us a little bit more information about what, what we can expect and what they, what they've been able to do so far and what, what this is going to help with.
Expand what they're doing.
Absolutely, Council President, counselors. It's an honor to speak to you guys tonight. Thank you for the opportunity. Just a quick snapshot, in the first six months, we piloted this kind of idea to have these navigators walk folks through the system. So with two navigators, we had eighty individuals served, sixty-two of those individuals are housed, and eighty-four of those, which I think is important, are still housed, right? And that's six months later or so, right? So we understand that we are navigating the system in a way that's making a difference, and that was just two, two folks. So we understand that with this system that is working with full, full system changes and, and support around them, that finding stability in the house, in the streets, finding them taking resources, understanding that we're here, we're trying to navigate the barriers that they might be running into, taking them to get IDs, taking them to appointments, regular support and care, they're, they're able to make those decisions, like you had mentioned, Counselor, to kind of walk through that. We, this isn't in, in, in theory, this is in practice. We see this working.
Counselors, any other questions or comments? Counselors, now to close, just to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Thank you, Madam President. So in closing, I just want to speak to a couple of things, specifically, the 1.9 is for recovery housing, which I'm expressly, you know, thinking it's fixing a gap, another gap that we have. We only budget two hundred thousand in HHH for eviction prevention. And so I was excited to see a lot of the funding really earmarked for, for housing stability and recovery housing, which is a huge need that we know for folks who, you know, suffering from substance abuse aren't always unhoused, right? And folks lose housing and that are faced with that choice to go into treatment or lose housing, right? Because they can't cover those months of rent and be off of work and all of the things to get that treatment. So I think we're going to see more success by expanding this program, and I urge your support. Thank you.
The motion is for a do pass to R one eighty. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Counselor Grouse, R one ninety-five.
Thank you, Madam President. R one ninety-five is approving a detailed spending plan for city of Albuquerque, New Mexico Short-Term Lodgers Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds taxable series 2025. I move a do pass.
There's a motion and a second by Counselor Feeblecorn. Counselor Grouse to open?
Thank you, Madam President. Let's see here. Council approved issuing one million dollars in lodgers' tax bonds a couple meetings ago, I believe. At that same time, we also passed legislation requesting the administration to come back with a plan for spending that money. And so that, this is that plan. It includes projects to get ready for the Route sixty-six centennial, such as lighting, banners, arts installation, and public exhibits. And just a matter of note, this funding can only be used for tourism-related things, and so that's what it's meant for. And I urge your support.
Before we go to that, we have public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Lisa Christopherson to speak.
Dr. Christopherson? All right, thank you very much.
And I believe, Madam President, Tad Nyuminski has left. That concludes comment.
Counselors, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, and with the, already the urging, the motion is for a do pass of R one ninety-five. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. We are moving on. There is no other business. Admin Q and A. Counselors, any questions for the admin? Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. Something was brought up earlier in the meeting, and I just want some clarification. I want to know why. So why is Robinson Park closed?
Mr. Waylon?
Council President and Counselor Sanchez, we're still rehabbing. The grass has several areas that, because of overuse, are just completely dead, so we're doing that. We're working on some of the irrigation in some of the fountain area.
Thank you. I just was worried that it had to do with balloon fiesta, and that park is frequented, frequented by a lot of homelessness. It's right on Central Avenue, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President. So there's a speeding camera on, well, I guess I won't tell where the location is. Some are really supposed to know, but anyway. It's, it shines, it flashes right into the backyard of a neighbor in, in the district. And so, and it just, it just, obviously, it goes off at all hours of the night, and you know how, you know how bright those are, and it literally just goes right in the back of these, this family's house. And so I guess I would just ask if we could, can we work together to see if we can just get that moved, adjusted? The easiest way, maybe put it across the street or move it down the road a little bit? Just, just want to see if we can work on that together with you all.
Madam President, Counselor Lewis will absolutely work with you. If you have the address of the home that it's signing into, that will, is helpful in addition to, I suspect I know the location, but we'll, we can make sure we address that with you to find a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Baca?
Thank you, Madam President. I had some questions for Dr. Sanchez that I sent early today about the RFP, but I believe she just left.
I saw her here just a little bit ago, but now she might have stepped out.
Madam President, Counselor Baca, I very likely can answer your questions.
Okay, so first question, how many inquiries did we receive to the RFP?
Madam President, Counselor Baca, we did-
On the chemo.
I'm sorry?
On the chemo theater.
So it's, how many inquiries to, or responses to the RFP for the chemo theater have been received to date? Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, Counselor Baca, good, I knew what you're talking about. We received one response to the chemo theater operating, operator RFP.
Okay. And then my second question, I imagine you, you were copied on the email for, from the Lenzic and the Somos Groups with concerns about the RFP.
Madam-
How do we plan on addressing that, or are we all going to get together?
Madam President, Counselor Baca, because it is a public procurement that's open right now with a response, we will go through the process related to that response, and, and the team will do the appropriate procurement process. Once that is closed, we'll be able to discuss any other feedback that we may or may not have received related to that. We don't want to interfere with the procurement, public procurement process by ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rogers?
Thank you, Madam President. I have some questions for APD in regards to some of the comments we had during public comment, and I sent this ahead of time in regards to the Jayvon Given case. I've received several phone calls, emails, texts since Friday when the news hit social media, and I just wanted to ask some clarifying questions just to clarify what we're hearing in the community and really just get the facts out there. And this was a black male who was identified as- And this was a black male who was identified as, it's hard to say the words, now that I just had to say it out loud, but deceased, right?
Chief of Staff.
Chief of Staff, Hernandez. Can you just walk us through the facts of this case as far as when APD responded to finding him deceased?
Yes. Madam President and Council Rogers, first of all, I want to, my thoughts and prayers are for the family. It's always tragedy when a life is lost. We were notified of this, obviously, last week, but the date of incident that occurred for Jayvon actually occurred in September 17th, September 17th of 2024, which was last year.
Thank you. And so, and then, so can you tell me about why we're just hearing about it now, and maybe why the family's just hearing about this now?
Madam President, Council Rogers, so how this occurred is, at the date of the incident, we were able to identify Mr. Jayvon on September 17th of 2024. Unfortunately, he was found deceased at that location at 10-200 Corales Road in a vacant building. During that time, we're attempting to notify, along with coordination with OMI of the Mexican. Unfortunately, we weren't able to make contact with anyone. So fast forward a year later, on October 1st, we were notified by Jayvon's twin sister that she wanted to report him missing. So we started, we did a missing persons, and of course, we had the detective that day, hours later, look into the case, and he would dig in and investigated, and found that he was actually deceased a year before. So notifications were made that day to his twin sister of what had occurred. And unfortunately, you know, obviously, getting that news, she was very upset.
Sure. Thank you so much for clearing that up for us and for the public. I think the big question that I'm getting is just, what was the investigation as far as APD's side in if there was foul play or no foul play in regards to his death?
So as I looked into this, our standard operating procedure 2-21 blazes out the responsibilities of officers, along with a crime scene investigator, of what protocols are to take of an unintended death. So this was an unintended death. So what occurred is that when the officers arrived on scene, you did follow protocol, and immediately notified a crime scene investigator, as well as an officer medical investigator that responded out to the scene. The scene was processed. The Office of Medical Investigation revealed that there was no foul play, and that it was a suicide. However, we continue to continue with the process. The standard procedure is to continue to process the scene, and of course, OMI took over the investigation. To this date, they have not changed their ruling, so we have continued, and that's where our investigation had ended.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking my call and kind of helping me unpack this, because there's a lot of confusion, I think, in the community, especially the black community, especially hearing that he was committed suicide by hanging himself? Because for our community, that's typically just not, usually not the case for us historically. It's not something we do to ourselves. And so this one was really hard for our community, and to not know that this happened until a year later, when his family reached out. But I just wanted to say to community, to his family, the City of Albuquerque, on behalf of the city and councilors, like, we absolutely take these things seriously, and work together to make sure we hold our community as folks, you know, unpack their feelings around this. So just appreciative for you all working with me to also recheck in with the family and make sure that they're okay, because I think that's my biggest thing, is just making sure the family feels supported by our city after finding out this news. Thank you so much.
Council Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. Just have a couple of questions. One of the questions, there's two questions, two different subjects. Actually, there's a few questions, two different subject. I actually requested, I sent over a, I just sent over an email, and what I wanted is I wanted the administration to provide the number of employees who were moved from unclassified to classified service during the 2025 calendar year to be broken down by date and by month. And then I also wanted, in reference to this conversation, employees starting job title, department, division, in the unclassified service, the employees ending job title, department, and division in the classified service, and the date on which the conversion was effective. Just wanted to, and I just wanted to see if that's been sent over to me yet.
Madam President, Director Stoker from HR is here to provide some information on that.
Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Madam President. Councilor Sanchez, I did get your email. I'm sorry I didn't get back to you in writing yet. I'm working on compiling a full report with the information you wanted. We need to verify the information, so I can probably get that to you by the end of the week. It looks like between 15 and 20 employees transitioned from unclassified to classified this year. There are also some vacant positions that were reclassified, but that's part of what we're working on gathering the data for you on.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Let me know when you get it, and I'd like to take a look at it, might have some more questions next meeting. Thank you. Okay, another subject. Ms. Keefe, I've actually sent over a document to you as well, and in that document, I was wanting, I was requesting some information as well. And what I was requesting was the amount of whistleblower lawsuits that have entered your office in the last eight years.
Council President, Council Sanchez, I apologize. I will get that to you. Yeah, I will, I will talk to Risk Management and get that to you.
Thank you. By when would you have that, please?
I will have to call Risk Management. I don't think it's something that will take them very long, but I'll have to check.
Okay. So when did you receive my email?
I'm not sure.
So if it's not that long, I just, did you ignore my email, or were you?
I'm not sure I remember seeing your email, but I will look for it.
Thank you.
Councilors, any other questions or comments? I will say, I have a couple, I have one comment, well, Director, I had asked you a while back, and this is based off of Council Sanchez's comment just now, but per the whistleblower ordinance, which is still being updated, I promise it is coming, but per the whistleblower ordinance, I think it says in there we are supposed to have an update, and we had looked into it, but I don't, we're supposed to have, I think it's an annual update on it, and I don't think, remind me if I'm wrong or right, but I don't think we've ever had one. And so we definitely need to look into that, because it is something per the ordinance that we were mentioning, so I guess for all parties sitting up there, can we please just look into that and figure out how to get it on a calendar, so that in perpetuity, this can be something that we all get moving forward? And then my real, my other question is regarding R 25188, this was the acceptance of state funds that included the IGAs with the intergovernmental agreements with the state. There were some deadlines in there, there were some requirements in there. Council hasn't necessarily heard back, but I know that I've had discussions. Madam CAO, can you please provide everyone an update and reassurance that we are in compliance, and also kind of the plans moving forward?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the discussion that we had, so that I could ensure we met what you were inquiring about. Within the intergovernmental agreement with the state, with the Secretary of Workforce Solutions, Secretary Sarita Nayer, there are several kind of milestones and obligations that we had. We've discussed previously our obligation to provide data to her, and that I shared that my intent is also to share that with city council. Our intent is actually to share that with the public as well. So we are two weeks into the two programs that currently are operating of reporting data. We've been doing some refining on that with, based upon feedback from Secretary Nayer's, just some brief feedback, and then finalizing that, taking out some kinks in that. But we are working with the University of New Mexico, who is our reporting partner in this, under contract to support us across all of this, as indicated within the IGA, and so they've been kind of tweaking and finalizing that. Our intent is to provide for you all a monthly report on the data, so you can see four weeks of data at a time, and see those trend numbers. As we look at it, it's requesting unduplicated head counts. That's one of the challenges, is to making sure that we know who we're counting each week, and whether they were counted last week, or, and so just being very effective in that. We will also be launching a public dashboard, with the intent of that being live in early October, so folks can see the reporting data that's included. In there additionally, the IGA included for us to be providing fiscal reports by the, and we'll be able to do that first fiscal report in October, which is the expectation. We executed, I'm sorry, we routed and ratified all of the contracts once the appropriation occurred here at council, so those are being fully completed, so that everyone will, each one of those contracts will be started and onboard and open on time. With the men's and women's navigation funding, we'll ensure that we have those open October 16th and 17th. And then the young adult, as we all know, that opening is in February. We intend for it to be February 1st. Everyone intends for it to be February 1st. Keep saying that as my meditation mantra at night. We also have ensured that, sorry, I got too far down in mine, I didn't keep up. There were some security requirements, all of that is fully complete. We are ensuring that we can report on the requirements related to trash pickup or litter. We also have, our construction is underway, that is funded, there were two capital projects within the funding, Gateway West project is underway, and the contractor for the roofs at Medical Respite is being brought onboard now, so we are on time on that. We have begun the integration for our Unites data entry, and we have completed the training that was required for all of the providers, so met that requirement. There are additional items, including meeting with them, and as well as other, you know, items to include evaluations and access, and we have been able to ensure that we facilitated all of that. So we will continue to track, maintain, and keep our data available, and ensure that we have it accurate by the, what's great is, when we give our first four-week report, it will be the two programs will have had four weeks, and then the second four-week report will have all of those programs up and running besides young adult, and we'll continue to provide those reports.
Thank you, Madam CAO. So you, in addition to the four weeks, do I remember that you also said we would have the, I mean, the best attempt at unduplicated numbers, but then also cumulative numbers as reports keep progressing?
Madam President, yes, that is our goal, is that we will have the opportunity to show the cumulative impact of individuals served, both, you should be able to see it weekly, monthly, and then the aggregate.
And then my new question, based off of the update, is you said that there should be a dashboard in early October, but I'm very skeptical, since it's October 6th.
Madam President, I feel still very confident that we're gonna be very close to early. I guess that's a, that is a relative timeframe.
So we're all gonna wake up tomorrow, and it'll be there. I'm just teasing. Just teasing.
Madam President, or by the 11th, or the 12th, or, I will provide you with a more exact date.
Okay. Councilors, any final questions or comments? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Now you can run out the door. Matthew, now you can run out the door.